I'd like to call this Board of Supervisors meeting back to order, please. The first item on the agenda is to go out of a closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Same move.
Second.
And moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crean?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye. And the next item is certification of closed meeting. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law was discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying to the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
Same move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crean?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Seven a.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation, and I will ask everybody to please stand and consider what we have before us tonight, and following the invocation, we will have our county administrator, Mr. Metz, do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, and we have a couple of them tonight. The first public hearing, the following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the burgs of the Roanoke Times on April 5th and April 15th, 2012, and it is for a special use permit amendment, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I get started, let me just say to the public that the Board's action is expected on May the 14th for this case. So we're here this evening to look at an amendment of an existing special use permit, basically of one condition, and get into this, and then when I finish, we have with us Donna Brown, the Executive Director of the New River Valley 911 Authority, and also Bob Pierceall, our GIS manager, which is kind of stepping in, and they're helping represent the Service Department this evening for this request. So if there's any technical issues, we'll call on their expertise once I finish. So, tonight, our, this is our vicinity map showing that our site is in the northwestern part of the county, it's on Oilwell Road. This is a detail, basically our zoning map. The site is 28 Oilwell, located on the north side of Oilwell, very close to the end of the road there. And here's our aerial photograph showing the tower outlined in the purplish blue here. We call this our Public Safety Tower, and if you'll notice, there's a couple of other towers here and another one here. Get you a little better shot of that in a few minutes. Our comprehensive plan designation is residential transition here in this area. The reason for this amendment is we would like to add microwave dish antennas no more than two feet in diameter to the tower, and our special use permit conditions currently prohibit that, so we are requesting the amendment. The zoning is agricultural A1, the lot is about an acre. It's in the process Fort Magisterial District E. About six years ago, the Board of Supervisors approved a special use permit for this same location to build a 160-foot communications tower. And the reason for that approval was there was a 120-foot tower, a lattice-type tower there, and it was deteriorating, it was giving problems with the signal, and there were too close a spacing on the tower for the antennas. So we built the taller tower, and the existing buildings that you are going to see in the photographs are there to maintain the equipment and so forth. Staff has taken a look at this application, basically the change is so minor in the request. We don't feel there's any major impacts from the addition of these two-foot diameter antenna, microwave dishes on the tower. There's no additional traffic or noise expected once the installation is completed. Of course, we don't need water or sewer, only electricity, basically, and that's already located on the site. The comp plan designation is residential transition. The plan, as they have submitted it, and you have a lot of details there in your package that I didn't put in this PowerPoint for this evening based on your long agenda tonight, but it's, the application's in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and we will be providing additional public safety by allowing this effective communication antenna to be added to the tower. Some of the folks that would use it would be the New River Valley Emergency Communications Authority, the county, the town of Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, Virginia Tech. There's several public agencies that will be on this tower that will benefit from this addition. So, the improvement of the coverage and interoperability among these regional public safety agencies is very important. We experienced some tragedies here in the last few years, and the ability for one agency to talk to the other in the time of crisis is utmost, so we want to take a look at that and try to fix it. These towers, excuse me, these dishes will be mounted at a height of 60 feet from the ground, so the dishes are only a foot and a half thick in depth, and the overall projection from the tower is only about two and a half feet. So we believe that you'll hardly be able to notice the addition of these microwave dishes once they're placed on the tower. The existing conditions up there on the top of the mountain, at the end of Oilwell Road, there's four towers there. Two are on the south side, and two are on the north. The two on the south are both commercial, one is 88 feet and the other's 185 feet. They're both self-supporting structures, and I'll show you a photo up here in just a second. The others are on the north side, and they are both lattice-type guide towers. The commercial tower is 100 feet, and our Public Safety Tower is at 160 feet. So this, you might be able to see this, gives you pretty good representation from the air. The 185-foot tower is here, and you can see how massive that is. The shorter tower is there. Someone asked me last week at the Planning Commission why it was painted red and white and didn't have a beacon. Well, Steve explained to me that in the old days, that's what you did, when you painted those towers the red and white so the airplanes could see them. FAA does not require lighting on top of the towers until they go beyond 199 feet in height. So on the north side, here is the 100-foot tower, and then this is our 160-foot Public Safety Tower. So as part of this package, the applicants are proposing that they will install some chain link fencing around the base of the tower and the guide wires to kind of provide another level of safety. There is no fencing whatsoever around this compound now, and we are happy that they're planning to take care of that. We notify the adjacent property owners as required by the state code, and we receive no comments based on those notifications. So the Planning Commission met on April 18th and reviewed the request. After they discussed it, we had one comment, and that gentleman was basically in support of the request, however, he was the gentleman who was interested about the lighting. So the vote was seven to zero to approve with one member absent. They approved it with the conditions that you have in your packet there, the tower is not to exceed the overall height of 160 feet, it shall not have lighting. These are all the same conditions that were on the previous approval, with the exception of the microwave dish. The engineering plan should be signed and sealed by the engineers, submitted to the building official. And here we go. The tower structure shall be only utilized by the Sheriff, Police, Fire, Rescue, Blacksburg Transit, New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority, and similar governmental agencies. No platforms of dishes greater than two feet in diameter shall be permitted above the tree line. So, basically, there will be no commercial-type use of this tower at all. The tower shall meet all the regulations found in the zoning ones, Section 1048. Now this is a map that our GIS department put together. This is our tower location, and the dishes are meant to connect or to talk with, I'm going to mouse the word here, talk with some equipment at Lane Stadium here, and then could be in a few years, we could add some more equipment that would talk with our Public Safety Building, we hope that will be completed soon downtown in Christiansburg. This is a picture of the tower itself with the two-foot diameter dish mounted on it at 60 feet in height. And this is a shot from the ground showing you basically the tower at 160 feet and its existing equipment buildings. And that's just another closer shot on the aerial photograph. Now, I will try to answer any questions you might have, and then if you have more technical type questions, we'll let the professionals take a stab at it.
Any questions of the Board? Looks like you've covered us pretty good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, is there anybody in the audience, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for this public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this public hearing? If so, please step forward and state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. Our second public hearing this evening is a proposed ordinance to temporarily changing the E1 precinct polling place for the primaries coming up. And, Marty?
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance that, as you spelled out, will temporarily change the E1 precinct polling place from its current location of St. Michael's Lutheran Church to Kips Elementary School, which is just down the road from it. The reason for this change is the state set the primary election for June 12th, and the registrar was then notified that the church had a prior engagement for that day, they have Bible study week during that election time, so they cannot accommodate the election. So they asked the registrar if they could find another location just for that election, and the registrar contacted the school system and talked with the superintendent, and she granted them approval to use Kips Elementary for the June 12th primary. And so the purpose of this hearing is to hold, and it's required, anytime you temporarily or permanently change your polling place, you have to hold a public hearing, and you have to do it by ordinance, and so that's the purpose of this public hearing. Also, we have to get Justice Department approval for this change, which could take 30 to 60 days, and so I ask that the Board consider approving this change under old business. That's the reason why that is on there, because we're in somewhat of a tight time constraint of getting this approved and then giving the registrar time enough to send out the notice of the temporary change. But this is only for the primary election only. The general election, it'll return back to St. Michael's Lutheran Church, so I know the registrar's here, and I think some of the electoral board may be here as well.
Okay. Mr. Wertz?
Mr. Chairman, fellow Board members, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have about the process. We will need to notify all of the voters in E1 that it's being temporarily moved. We'll do that by sending each one of them a notice, a personal notice to them, notifying them of the change. We'll also do an ad in the run of times notifying everybody of the change, as well as putting a sign up in front of St. Michael's so that people know they need to go to Kips. We've used Kips before when we've had to do this, and we already have a sign made up, ready to go. So it's a pretty good switch, and most of the people that have been accustomed to switching from E1 over there, so. Any questions?
Any questions of the Board?
Just one quick question. One quick question, and this might be better directed to Ruth, or just, are there other ways perhaps that we might be able to make sure that the word gets out? I don't know about making sure it's on the website and things like that.
We will definitely have that. It'll be on the website, and I'm sure Public Information will send out a notice to the email list, things like that, so everybody's aware of the change. But they'll get, each voter will get a personal letter from us, letting them know that it's being changed.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Randy. And is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this public hearing? If so, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing. The next item on the agenda is public address. And I would hope that everybody will get some good thought to what they're saying, and we will listen attentively, as I think we've done pretty well in the past. And I have several speakers signed up, and as we did the last couple of times with so many speakers, I will call out the name of the person to approach, and then I will call out the person to follow, and if they'll move closer to the front of the podium, as I mentioned their name, so they're ready to come forward and we can move the process along faster. As we always state, you'll have five minutes to address the Board, and we ask you, please, to give your name and address. After we're done reading the list, we'll have an opportunity for other people to come and speak, because a lot of people have come in later. So at one point in time, we had people leave not knowing whether they would be able to speak or not, but we do allow that and have, ever since I've been on the Board, so don't hesitate to wait until the list is done and get your opportunity to speak. The first speaker is Alexandria LaMere, and following Ms. LaMere is Susan Mar-Megas.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, good day. My name is Alexandra LaMere, and I live at 619 New Jolene in Blacksburg. I have been a resident of Montgomery County for nine years. I'm here tonight to support the 12 cents increase and urge you to vote for it. I have reviewed Superintendent Blacksburg's report, and it created a great concern for me. If I had known the shortfall in funding for Montgomery County was facing, I would have supported an even higher increase. Now I know that our public schools are bareborn. The cutting teachers is going to discourage new teachers that have been serving this community. We need to retain our talents for the future and not be short sighted. Public school have a responsibility to offer quality education to all childrens. I am counting, I am counting on the class teachers to be able to give individual attention when needed. I am counting on the specialty classes to grow respectful and well-rounded citizens with disciplines such as guidance, library, art, music, PE. I am counting on the special ed program to offer children learning disability and education close to home. The possibility of schools closing is also a great concern to me. Schools are a fabric of society. Having school nearby allows the participation of the families. A good example for me was last week, we had a music and art night, and parents treasured seeing their children beaming with pride. I would like my children and all children to have access to a quality public education, to be taught respect of diversity, and to be able to bloom in academic and non-academic classes. Please vote for the full increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mar-Megas? I know I butchered that. And the next speaker will be Jim O'Dowd.
Good evening, Chairman, and esteemed members of the Board. My name is Susan West Mar-Megas. I'm a mother of two children in Blacksburg, Virginia. I reside at 305 Rocker Road in Blacksburg. I'm actually here tonight to present a petition that has been circulated around residents of this county over the last couple of weeks, and I'm pleased to stand here on behalf of 331 residents of Montgomery County who have signed the petition that reads as follows: Dear Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, we, the undersigned, are residents of Montgomery County, concerned about the potential of significant cuts to K through 12 public education in our county. We have prided ourselves on the quality of our public schools in this county and cannot afford to reduce our financial commitment to our children. We should be investing more, not less, in our county's infrastructure and personnel. Please adopt the 12 cent tax increase to help protect our county's schools. We are deeply concerned that if the full 12 cents tax increase is not approved, that there is a greater likelihood of school closings, cuts in teacher positions, and special education programs. Please adopt a budget that protects all of our schools and ensures that no school in this county is closed. You have before you a petition with 331 signatures. I emailed you this last evening when we had 300, there are a few more on the list. We've cleaned up the list for all the duplicates. The members of, the people who have signed this list are all residents of this county. It's organized by jurisdiction, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Reiner, Shawsville, and I have it here before you. Thank you very much for your time and attention tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Dowd, and following Mr. O'Dowd is Linda Plant?
Hello, my name is Jim O'Dowd. I live at 2431 Montever Road in Blacksburg. I'm here again to urge you to vote in favor of the 12 cent tax increase. Now that this deficit reduction item's been presented to the school board, we're now aware of the extent of the cuts, and they are quite severe, and some of them even include school closures, which would be detrimental to this community. Even if the 12 cent tax increase is passed, there will still be approximately a $5 million budget deficit. So that, I think, is reason alone to vote in favor of this 12 cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And following, is it Mrs. Plant?
Plout.
Plout?
You are close.
Will be, Ms. Gruss?
Hi, I'm Linda Plout. I live at 620 Watson Lane in Blacksburg, Virginia. I support the tax increase because I care about our local children and grandchildren, but I have a much more selfish reason. I've lived here for 30 years, I've invested a lot in my home and my community. I know that when young families choose a location for a home, the first thing they look for is good schools. I want young families to continue to buy and invest in Montgomery County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Gruss? And following Ms. Gruss is Erin Bull.
Good evening, my name's Laura Gruss, and I guess I represent one of the young families that she just mentioned. My husband and our three children and I just moved to Blacksburg last summer from Chicago. We live at 802 Sunshine Farm Lane in Blacksburg now. And I'd like to ask you to vote in favor of the property tax increase to support public education here in Montgomery County. Our children are ages 10, 6, and 2. Our two daughters, our older children, go to Harding Avenue Elementary in Blacksburg, and we very much hope that our little boy will be able to go to Harding when he starts kindergarten. As they say, we moved here from Chicago last summer, and a big part of the reason that we moved here is because of the excellent public schools here in Montgomery County. There was no public or affordable private education available where we lived in Chicago that approached the quality of the education that our children are receiving here. We've been so happy with the education that they're getting here, and we hate to think of our wonderful school or any other school, any other public school here in this county closing because the education of our community's children isn't a high enough priority. As a parent, but just as importantly as a member of this community now who wants to see it prosper in the future, I just join with hundreds of other people here in asking you to pass this modest tax increase. We really think it's a very worthwhile price to pay to allow the excellent public education in Montgomery County to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Bull, and she'll be followed by Jack Sokovich.
Good evening, I'm Erin Bull. I reside at 2703 Chelsea Court in Blacksburg. Over the past four years, I've spoken to this Board on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. Tonight, I'm here as an individual. I am both a teacher and a taxpayer, and I urge the Board to pass the 12 cent increase and invest in Montgomery County's children. I grew up in Montgomery County and graduated from Auburn High School. My parents both were teachers. My mom taught second grade at Reiner Elementary, and my father taught English and history at Auburn High School. Growing up, I saw firsthand the dedication that teachers bring to the classroom, as I watched my mom and dad grade papers and write lesson plans every evening. My dad was also the junior class sponsor, he coached forensics, math, and debate. But that wasn't enough. He also was a member of the Army Reserves, so that my parents could save enough money to send my brother and I to college. As I was growing up, I would play school with stuffed animals and often recruit my little brother because of the role models I had at home. But when I headed to college, my parents, my mom in particular, encouraged me not to become a teacher. She knew the challenges teaching entailed, the extra time and resources that teachers donate to their students and classrooms. So I majored in political science and communication with the goal of working for a nonprofit because I wanted to make a difference. I interned with the National Education Association because even before I was a teacher, I knew teachers touch lives, and if I wasn't a teacher, I could at least advocate for children and public education. I earned my bachelor's and my master's degree from Virginia Tech, but during this time, I also substitute taught at Auburn Elementary, and I fell in love with teaching. I loved the look that a student got in their eyes when they finally got it with a difficult math program, or when they found a book that filled them with excitement. I applied for student loans and entered the teacher licensure program at Rutherford University. After about a year, I was teaching. I love my job and I love my students, but despite what some of the community have said at previous meetings, teaching's not easy. My parents were right. Teachers work long hours, and they spend their own money on materials. This past Thursday, I arrived at school at 7:30 in the morning for TNT. It's a tutoring program my colleague and I started to help students with homework and schoolwork on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So TNT, a dynamite way to start your day. I tutored my students for an hour before school started. I also had brought two grams of paper with me that day, so I would have paper dews for printing and xeroxing because we once again are running low on our paper. I differentiated instructions for students in social studies, reading, writing, spelling, and math, graded 44 quizzes and 18 essays, and when the students left at 3:45, my day wasn't over because I had an IP meeting with our special education teacher and a parent that lasted for an additional hour. Following that, I had Friday boulders to complete so that I could give parents individualized information about their student's progress academically and behaviorally. I didn't leave Christiansburg Elementary until 6:15 that night. I shared a day in my life to show you the commitment that I and other educators have to the children in Montgomery County. We want them to succeed, and we go above and beyond to make them be able to do their best. Without the 12 cent increase, MCPS could lose over 40 positions resulting in larger class size. Instead of 22 students in my class, next year I'll have 20. Instead of 22 students in my class, next year I'll have 25 or more. Students won't receive the same individual attention, and that will negatively impact student learning. Even with the 12-cent increase, I know I will not get a salary increase because there still is an approximately $5 million shortfall. In fact, even with this 12-cent increase, I may be taking home less money next year because of paying portions of my insurance in retirement. So I'm not here asking for this increase for any personal gain. I'm asking for this increase because I want the Board of Supervisors and the people of Montgomery County to join with me, to prepare our children for their futures. I'm asking you to invest in the future of Montgomery County where I was raised and still reside. You know that funding education is the right thing to do morally and economically. I ask you to vote for the 12-cent tax increase and invest in our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bull. Mr. Selkovich, and following Mr. Selkovich is Bob Kroger.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jack Selkovich, out on High Rock Hill Road down in Pilot, Virginia. This board was responsible for creating the financial chaos that we are enduring. You did so by incurring debt without asking the taxpayers through referendum to vote on assuming the debt. Now the citizens must pay the price. Page 21 of your proposed budget indicates we have $3,488,746 in year-end reserve funds. Those funds should be used first to diminish the debt. In concert with the $1.7 million growth from last fiscal year, this would cover one-half of the debt increase service. A million dollars is also allocated for our rainy day fund. I think a collapsed roof would qualify as a rainy day event. This is the time to utilize those reserves. Should the economy pick up, we can start replenishing those reserves next year. These measures would diminish the increase by five cents, necessitating only a seven-cent increase. On page 20 of your budget, the budget suggests another million dollars going to capital reserves. That's another penny we could use to reduce the increase. If you actually intend to build the animal shelter you want, the million dollars you've allocated for that purpose should be used for its intended purpose and should not let to be sit and linger where it might get reallocated. A word was used during these budget discussions. The county administrator has proposed a budget, but discussions of numbers by the board members during the budget hearings was woefully inadequate. The school superintendent offered an itemized list of proposed cuts to the most popular programs, a typical scare tactic used to bolster budget requests. In this era of austerity, why not consider, at least consider, increasing student-to-teacher ratios to 21 to 1, which is the established number set by the Code of Virginia? Studies have shown that educational quality has not increased with reduction of class size, yet our schools insist on student-to-teacher ratios well beyond state mandates. The superintendent recommends a cut of 25 instructional positions which would result in one more student per classroom and allow the savings of $1.46 million. How many more millions could we save if we actually followed the state mandates? Then we wouldn't have to consider elevated sports and other popular items. What was the student-to-teacher ratio when you went to school? How would you rate your educational experiences in this county? Our school board must realize the purpose of schools is to educate our youth and not provide jobs for educators. University President Charles Steger noted in Saturday's Roanoke Times, employees account for 68% of the university's expenses. Why do Montgomery County schools count for over 88% of our expenses? What's wrong with this picture? To dispense over $91 million to a school system and then hear employees come to this lectern and report purchasing classroom supplies and hear reports of minor building repairs and Floyd priorities in their budget? Require the school administration to get their fiscal house in order. It is your fiduciary responsibility to maintain proper fiscal oversight of our county budget, including the vast amount going to the school system. Please discuss this tax increase thoroughly. It affects all your constituents. Remember, when a business has its real estate taxes raised, it must pass those increases on to its customers just to survive. The taxpayer gets hit not at home, but every time she goes to the stores and the restaurants. This has to have a negative impact on shopping purchases, which in turn reduces sales tax revenues in Montgomery County. Reduce the tax increase to seven cents. The numbers are right there in your own budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Selkovich. Mr. Kroger, and following Mr. Kroger will be Kelly Pleasant.
I'm Bob Kroger, 405 Cedar Orchard Drive in Blacksburg. In Sunday's paper, there was a very wonderful article by Julia Milton, who has been a teacher in our school system for 35 years along with her husband. And it was a very, very interesting article, giving many points which everyone should really read this article and pick up some very important facts. I'll just read the last paragraph of her article. "Simplify the educational process. So much time, energy, and money is being wasted on programs that truly do not benefit students, teachers, or the education process." Lauren Sari wrote the most common sense and thought-provoking commentary in the Roanoke Times on March 18th. His was "The Voice of Reason and Experience: Someone Should Listen," and what he said was "Stop Building Blacksburg High School."
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. And Ms. Pleasant. And following Ms. Pleasant will be Bill Stevenson.
Good evening, Chairman Politists, County Supervisors, Mr. Meadows. I am Kelly Pleasant, President of the MCEA and resident at 2737 Old Four Road of over 20 years. I would like to thank the board for its past support of education in Montgomery County. The decisions you have before you are complicated and sometimes very difficult. Certainly, this budget cycle has been extremely frustrating with revenue deficits and a late-arriving budget from the state. The proposed state budget will put perhaps between $400,000 and $600,000 back into the Montgomery County public schools. That is not a small amount, to be sure, but it is also not enough to fund the school board's proposed budget or even to fulfill the state promises to public education. I therefore speak in favor tonight of the advertised 12-cent tax increase. This increase is necessary, and as a community, we will all bear the responsibility of funding valuable county services. Often, the most difficult decisions bring about the best results. It is time to move forward in Montgomery County to continue to show support for public education and all important government services. We should not continue to cut and reduce when what we should be doing is increasing and updating programs and services to keep pace with other counties and municipalities statewide. The 12-cent increase will not fund the Montgomery County Public School proposed budget, nor will reinstate the losses that Montgomery County Public Schools has incurred in recent years. But this investment will go a long way to maintain funding for all the county programs. Excuse me. Many of us believe that Montgomery County schools are superior to other school systems, and we don't want to raise class sizes to the state average. Virginia Tech can increase tuition, I know I have two students there, every year to keep up with their budget, and they do. Okay? And so to compare us to Virginia Tech and say that our ratio with our employees is impossible to compare. They have so many other ways of achieving money. So I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this important vote and to I offer support as you move forward toward a final budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson. And following Mr. Stevenson is Brooks Seville, I guess.
I'm Bill Stevenson, 1205 Allington Road, Blacksburg. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to express my views on the budget deliberations. I have three broad points to make. I remain extremely concerned that the proposed increase may be as high as 12 cents. In these times of economic stress, there are many Montgomery County citizens for whom the new rate will cause severe hardship. We should be listening to and helping these friends and neighbors, not following the lead of those whose universal solution to all problems is to increase taxes. The board has caused this problem by acceding to the demands for two new schools, coupled with the unrealistic budget request of the school. There is no need to provide Cadillac school buildings when a Ford model will be more than adequate. If we pay teachers more, then it must be based on merit, not length of service. We need to increase class sizes. We need to cut out unnecessary, non-core classes, and certainly trim down on the administrative superstructure. Secondly, it is time to challenge the school board and let them know who is running the county. A board which accepted $1.2 million for school buses and instead spent it on teacher bonuses on computers has displayed both arrogance and insubordination. Yet it seems neither the school superintendent nor the board of supervisors had the authority to reverse the decision. More recently, the school board squandered $85,000 of taxpayer money on a consulting exercise which led to the redistricting of a mere 121 students. This is an outrage. The tail is wagging the dog. The board of supervisors must address this issue before the school board bankrupts the county in the name of education. We need a critical review of our school system to improve efficiency and to ask why, after many years of strong funding, the performance of our students is not improving. Thirdly, no matter what the final decision on a new rate, I urge the board to take a critical look at its budget process before next year's cycle begins. Units need to provide balanced budget requests, and they need to provide a secondary request based on a 5% cut. There should be rewards for those units which return funds at the end of the fiscal year and penalties for those that overspend. Of course, the school board budget needs special attention since that request alone accounts for such a large portion of the county's expenditures. We must bear in mind that shoveling more money into an inefficient system does not produce better results. Washington has not grasped that fact, but we are surely smarter here in Montgomery County. Therefore, I suggest you consider appointing a review panel of independent citizen volunteers to advise you in this area. If this is not done, we will soon be dragged into insolvency by this excessive drain on our limited resources. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson and Ms. Seville. Brooks Seville, I'm sorry. And following Mr. Seville is Bill Murray.
Good evening. My name's Brooks Seville, 1920 Brooks Steel Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I come tonight to oppose the tax increase. I think this is a bad time to be trying to do that. Y'all dug us in a hole that we've got now you want us to pay for and get out of it. It's a shame to hear they can't afford to buy paper and we spent millions of dollars on building schools. I don't, like I say, I don't know the answer to how to address it, but I think y'all have made us a problem, and I think it's very bad to ask the taxpayers to keep trying to pay to fix the problem that y'all keep throwing money at and it's not being addressed very well. So in my district, which is District E, I think a good portion of us oppose the tax increase. It would be, it'd hit a lot of people down where we live pretty hard, which is in Price is Fork. Lots on fixed incomes and things like that, and it'd really affect them hard. I know it doesn't sound like a whole lot of money, but we don't have a lot. In my community, don't have the option to raise taxes to make up for the shortfall in their gas costs just as much as anybody else's. But I just wanted to let you know that I oppose the tax increase. I support the schools. If you can figure out a way to pay for stuff, it's great, but I just don't think raising the taxes is going to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seville. And Bill Murray, and following Mr. Murray is Catherine Davis.
Bill Murray, I live at 401 Givens Lane in Blacksburg. And I listen to people, I think we're a little off base here. The tax increase is to service the debt, and this debt is due to school construction. In some ways, it was avoidable. It concerns me, though, that in the news messenger on Saturday, they talked about closing Harding Avenue and Belleville Elementary, supposedly because of budget shortfalls. I was unable to confirm that, but in government ease, at least the federal level, that's called surplusing. And due to that, the Price is Fork Elementary was reported as being only at 30% occupancy. It raises the question, why are we building new schools when we're not using the schools we have? Now, this is a tax increase would be a big hardship to many families, seniors, and the disabled, who don't necessarily own their property, their homes, and would not be eligible for the waivers or the tax relief. Their rent would go up. My rent would go up probably $100 a month. I can't afford $1,200 a month increase in living expenses, in housing expenses. So it's a major hardship. It also seems to be wasteful since we're building, we're overbuilding at this time when the economy's bad. Sure, the plan ahead is good, but to overbuild when you don't have the money is bad. I think we can avoid all this debt. We've doubled the county debt with the building. We need to slow down, reconsider whether a lot of that building, if it's absolutely necessary, if we're surplusing basically three schools. So, and the discussion can go on. Poor education, I have a 33-year career in teaching at all levels from K through 12, community colleges, and colleges. So I know what it is to have an overcrowded classroom. I've had classes as small as 10, as large as 40. I had one lab, which was not quite knuckle experience, 60 people in there trying to keep from blowing themselves up. That was nerve-wracking, to say the least, and it was just me. So I know what it is to have a big classroom. I know what it is to have limited facilities and resources. I know all these problems. I was able to overcome it, and I was teaching part-time in higher education, so I didn't get paid a lot. I'd have to work another job, and it just, I understand the problems that teachers are facing. I wasn't a union member. There is no union in higher education where I was. And it's just, the problem seems to be that we're increasing our debt unnecessarily. We need to back off, see if the building projects we have are really necessary. We overbuilt, and the school budget, just as a side note, Franklin County's entire county budget is smaller than our school budget. Yeah, they're smaller, but just to, you know, perspective and just to see where we stand relative to our neighbors. I wasn't able to check on Floyd, or Giles, or Craig. But we have a huge school budget, and if we're having shortfalls and we're surplusing buildings, the question's, do we need to do all this? And I'm opposed to the tax increase at 12 cents. I think 7 is more manageable, but it's still a heartache for many. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. And Catherine Davis is coming forward. Following Catherine Davis is John Gill.
My name is Catherine Davis, and I live on Milton Avenue in Christiansburg. And I
And I come before you tonight and I'm going to keep it short and simple. Please vote for our children. Please vote for our first responders. Please vote for our future. Please support the 12 cent tax increase.
Thank you. And Mr. Gill. And following Mr. Gill, and I hope I don't ruin this name too badly, Peter Sagalke.
My name is John Gill. I live at 2037 Houghville Road in Pilot. There have been some recent statements in the Runic Times about the school board's control of the budget. And I quote an article from the Richmond Times. "Under Virginia law, county supervisors approve an overall amount of money for the schools, but the school board decides how to spend it." While that's not exactly true, I contacted the Richmond Department of Education and found that there are two ways. One is lump sum. And if it's done in this way, the board of supervisors has no control over the money, and the school board spends it the way they want to. This is a perception that some school board and board of supervisor members have projected, both in their respective meetings and in local media. The second category is by category. The state authorizes eight or nine major categories. In your budget, you are using six categories: instructional, administrative, transportation, non-instructional, operation and maintenance, and school nutrition. So, it appears that you are using the category method, not the lump sum method. Once money is allocated for a category, it is not within the school board's authority to move it to another major category without the board of supervisors' approval. This appears to have been the case with additional authorization for the school buses and the computers. There is nothing to preclude the board of supervisors from requiring the school board to provide subcategories within any major category. This would allow monies to be redirected. Subcategorization would allow major categories would allow the monies to be redirected within the major category, but you couldn't move it. And these two, subcategorization plus the utilization of the major categories would provide a better monetary understanding of the needs of the school board and make them more accountable to the board of supervisors. If the school board wonders why there is so much emphasis on their budget, they forget it's 70% of our entire budget. I see a start pay and benefit package of $50,000 for a first-year teacher. How many of us started or even attained this degree of compensation? In their 190 to 200 contractual days, 10-month work schedule, teachers get 10 sick days, two personal days, 11 non-scheduled workdays. And I see many earlier these days. I wonder if there is an actual teach day. The U.S. is about 17th in the world in math and science. And I quote a U.S. News article on February 17, 2009. "Given what the U.S. spends on education, its low student achievement through high school shows the system is clearly ineffective." And I'd say that's still very true in this year's. If there's any member of the school board that has a close relationship with the school, be it a husband or wife working for the Montgomery County Public Schools, a current or former teacher, they should preclude or refrain from voting on Montgomery County Public School matters if for no other reason than to avoid the appearance of impropriety. I concur with the statement of a previous school superintendent, Arnie Sarah, in his editorial letters that he should fix the existing Blacksburg High School and halt the construction of a new school. This wouldn't cost the taxpayers nearly as much as the construction and long-term financial obligations. From the center of the earth to where we sit or stand is not solid and can change at any time. We just need to fix or repair what is necessary and carry on. I would suggest that you read the April 22, 2012 Berge Forum opinion by Julie Milton, page 5. Evidently, a really common sense lady. For this reason, I do not support any increase in the school board funding or higher tax. We just need to repair what is broke. This is not a call for divisiveness, but no longer should there be a premise that my dog is bigger than no dog. The call is, we are Montgomery County and we strive rectitude. The Montgomery County Tea Party wears a insignia Paul Revere Rody. Remember his warning, "The British are coming, the British are coming." It's not the British this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. And I'm not going to try that again. You can tell me.
Good evening, Mr. Warren.
And following Peter Sagalke.
Peter Sagalke.
Okay.
Thanks.
And following here is Catherine Kincaid.
I live at 2168 Harding Road. And I have three daughters, and we've lived in Montgomery County for the past six years. I support Harding Avenue Elementary. This is one of the schools that's maybe consolidated. I support not doing that. I'm originally from Houston, Texas, and was educated there. Houston, Texas is, good public schools are typically an oxymoron. Not very good public schools there. And when we moved to Blacksburg, I was planning on putting my children in private school. But before I did that, I attended Harding Avenue and was impressed. And my eldest daughter is in kindergarten there, and it's a wonderful, wonderful school. And one of the things I did want to point out is, I was looking at the distance through Mathquest on having to drive her daughter to school. And because of family situation, she cannot take the bus. And that will represent an extra 12 miles a day or 60 hours of commuting. And you add all of that up, and it's more expensive than the $1,000 we'd be saving per student and much more expensive than 12 cents tax. So, from an economic perspective, it doesn't make much sense to me to close down that school. It's also one of the best schools in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kincaid. And following Ms. Kincaid. Vernon.
Hello. Well, I feel like a bulldozer has just run over me. I feel like the scare tactics and lobbying have worked. Our little group didn't have the means to call a faculty meeting at every school and get the parents and teachers all excited about all of these things that were going to happen. And I don't blame them for being here. People, when they get scared of things, they show up. My husband said this was probably a waste of time, and he's probably right, but he knows me well enough to know that when I think something needs to be done, I'm not going to just ignore it and stay home. It seems to me that enough of you have decided on the maximum 12% tax increase. We've urged you to vote for a much lower increase in efficient and responsible spending. Instead, you're choosing a much lower standard of living for the citizens of Montgomery County who are paying the bills. You've completely ignored the pleas of taxpayers and listened to the self-centered mantra of those who want everything from the pockets of the citizens. Hopefully, some good will come out of this unprecedented increase. That will be when taxpayers receive their tax bills. They will be outraged and become involved in the process with the rest of us who have been involved, and that they will hold you responsible for this debacle. The struggle to pay the bills and keep their houses will be a constant reminder to do just that. Some will lose that struggle. According to the Runic Times, college enrollment is declining because of the majority of graduates are not finding jobs except in service employment. The article stated that 53.6% of graduates are unemployed or underemployed, which is the highest it's been in 11 years. If college enrollment decreases, who is going to attend these schools and who's going to pay for them? This area has had a lot of people who've retired here over the past few years. They've chosen our community because of lower taxes, not great services. Larger communities offer more services. And if that's what they wanted, they would have stayed in their communities. Who's going to pay the bills if you tax them out of this county? I urge you to think with your heart and your head and to vote for a lower tax and force the spendthrifts to live within our means. You all have the control. It is time to take responsibility and do the right thing to bring this community together and help each other and get along. All I've heard in the past few weeks are it's one group against another group. Those may be the haves against the have-nots or whatever. What we need to do is work together to do the best thing for every single citizen in this county. And I don't think that's been done before. We need to vote for the citizens and not along party lines that exert peer pressure. The success or failure of our county could be at a crossroads and in your hands. Spending more sure hasn't helped the nation. Why should it help Montgomery County? Everywhere you go, you hear talk of spending cuts. But here, we don't hear talks. We just hear threats of things that are going to be cut if we don't get all of the spending that we want. Why aren't you living in the real world with the rest of us? I urge the people here supporting the tax increase to get the information they need and to know about the inefficient way this county has handled our finances, especially the school board. And I think if they did, they would change their minds. I urge them to take the time to find out and not just beg for more money to be spent, but to find out how to spend it wisely to make sure that every student is treated well. And I'd just like to know that I had 33 students when I taught, and I'll bet you the scores were better than they are now.
Vernon. You're going to pronounce your last name for me, sir.
Yes, Vernon Burns said. I live at 602 Preston Avenue. I've lived in Blacksburg for 34 years. My son and his wife both graduated from Montgomery County Public Schools. She's now a medical doctor, a neonatologist at John Hopkins University. And he's vice president of operations for Solar Energy Company, which has major installations up and down the east coast. They received a really good education in Montgomery County. I support the tax increase for Montgomery County because our schools cannot afford to lose programs, especially programs like music. After many years of research and questioning, there's now very conclusive evidence about the effects of quality music instruction. All quality schools, all good schools, have good music programs. Significant positive relationships exist between music study and SAT scores, grade point average, SOL achievement, school attendance, positive citizenship, and emotional well-being. This is not surprising when you consider the complexity of music performance. When one performs music, one is not just reacting, but one is thinking in action. You have to interpret notation, which is like interpreting a foreign language. You have to listen to what other people are doing. You have to remember what you just did. You have to think ahead to what is coming. And you have to play or sing the correct note at the precise, correct time. Applause to all this complex activity is that it makes you feel good at the same time. MRI images of brain activity during music performance reveal that making music is one of the most complex activities that humans can do. The whole brain is activated in ways that are not evident in other activities. Control studies have shown long-term positive effects of music study on memory and cognitive retrieval. A significant part of quality music program in elementary is elementary music. In Montgomery County, we have a wonderful elementary music program. We only have it twice a week. And that's not very much time for something as complex as music. But our teachers do a wonderful job. If you go to any school from Price's Fork to Auburn, you're going to hear and see kids making quality music. All kids, not just gifted kids, kids with special needs, and kids from diverse economic backgrounds. Music has the power to reach every student in our schools. Not only does it enhance their intellectual development, but also their emotional well-being. It was the first subject added to the American school curriculum after reading, writing, and math. Please support and fund our schools so that we can keep such a valuable program and make our schools continue to have the great quality they have now.
Thank you very much. All right, we're even up now. Let's hold the applauses, please. We're trying to get through this tonight, and I think we've got a ways to go. At this time, we have nobody else signed up for public address. But I did want to recognize gentlemen that just walked in a few minutes ago, Delegate Joseph Yost. And before we go on to other folks, I'd ask Delegate Joseph, he'd take the stand. He might get drilled. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we have a state budget, sort of. As you all are probably aware, we passed a state budget last Wednesday, finally, after five weeks of negotiations. And as I'm sure you all are aware, with any budget process, there's many things that you like and there's many things that you would not like in a budget. There's many things that I like and many things that I don't like. And so, what I've been doing the last week and over the next coming week has been going around to all the local governments in my district and speaking for a few minutes on things that I think would affect local governments more from the state budget perspective. And so, we'll start with what everybody's here for tonight, public education. Public education is a very important issue for me. I was a child in public school, and I was very pleased with what the state ended up doing in their compromise with the budget. When the governor first introduced his budget in December, he only added about $438.2 million in additional spending for public education. With the compromise that we got last week, they added an additional $214.7 million on top of that, bringing the new spending on public education to $652.9 million to help fill in some of the money that had been taken away over the last couple of years. Looking at that from the 12th district perspective, from the difference between the introduced and the compromise, we saw a net increase of $2.7 million in public education spending direct to our 12th district school divisions. In Montgomery County, the total spending went up $1.2 million over the next two years. And it's something that both myself and Delegate Rush and Delegate Habib had advocated very strongly for, knowing the fiscal situation the county faced. Unfortunately, it didn't go all the way in filling in from the local composite index change. And our inquiries into looking into the hold harmless monies that were used previously were shot down immediately because it was made clear to us that was a one-time thing only, unfortunately. Relating to public safety, they added an additional $7.4 million over the next two years to fund sheriff's offices for their duties related to law enforcement, court security. There was something that I was not too thrilled with in the budget relating to local fines and diverting that money to the literary fund. The language was changed and reduced the potential $3.6 million to $1 million and raised the threshold to 40%. And Montgomery County will not be affected by that. The only district in my area that will be affected will be Rafford, unfortunately. Regarding compensation from the state level, this year, there will be a one-time bonus of up to 3% for state employees and college faculty effective December 1, 2012. And next year, there will be a 2% raise for state employees, college faculty, and state-supported local employees. State employees will see this in their paycheck beginning July 1, 2013. And local employees will see this effective August 1 of next year. And lastly, the one thing that I was not thrilled with at all was the proposed changes in the Virginia retirement system. I voted against all the changes. I felt they were going to create an undue burden on not only the employee, but also the locality. In my conversations with Craig and all of my county administrators and city manager in the district, it was going to be a pretty hard hit. The governor did offer some amendments to help change and lessen that burden in transition and phase it into 5% over five years, so you don't have to do 1% every year until it's five years is up. And with that, those are the major highlights from a county perspective. Do y'all have any questions you would like to?
Any questions to Delegate Yost? Mr. Brown?
I don't have a question, but Delegate Yost, I would like to thank you for coming to our board meeting. In my time of board member, I can't remember a delegate or a senator or whatever coming to give us an update. You know, so I really appreciate you coming and sharing the information that you have with us. And also to thank you for the updates, the updates that you'd sent out to our boards and things on what was going on in Richmond. And I know when you come here, I mean, it could be friendly and unfriendly because, you know, I personally think that the state needs to step to the plate more because, you know, I personally think that the state needs to step up to the plate more and do more for public education, to do more for our constitutional officers, and instead of putting it on the backs of the citizens of the localities and things like that. But who am I to say? I'm just one, and I guess the administration in Richmond knows what they're doing.
Okay. Well, I would be the first one to agree with you one hundred percent that the state has quote-unquote shafted localities over the last couple of years and put undue burden on them. I think we've worked to try to fix that, but I don't know if it'll ever be one hundred percent fixed.
I'd like to.
Ms. Biggs.
I'd also like to thank you, Delegate Yost, not only for coming tonight and updating us, but throughout the session, and for your welcoming when we went to Richmond to lobby. But I also want to take this opportunity to also thank you for listening tonight. This is sort of a mild meeting as far as what we've been through.
Yeah.
And you can see what happens when the bucks don't come as they should back to locality. And people that know me know I'm just very, very, this is a passion of mine, and it's been for all these years to, you know, to go to Richmond and say, hey, look, you're our partner in this. And I want to thank you for attempting your first term to be a partner, but I also want to challenge you with, we need more. And I'm hoping next year, to me, when it broke down to what Montgomery County was really getting, and help me with this, I read the VEA figures, and it was like $611,000 plus for this year and $630-some thousand plus for next year. But when you're looking at the deficits that the school system's looking at, you know, like you alluded to earlier, that's very little. So anything that you could do, whether it be, you know, I don't know when you need to get started on it or what help you need from us to push, but we need more help. And, and I keep coming back to the fact that Virginia is the sixth wealthiest state in the nation and one of the lower-tax states. And one of our things that we've gone to and we talked to you about always is, if the state isn't going to raise the revenue, if there was a way to give the localities a way to raise revenue besides this regressive real estate property tax, it would really help if there was a more fair way to raise revenue. If the state isn't going to fund what needs to happen back here, if we could have a way to do it, that would be more fair. So anything that you can do or we can help you with that way would be greatly, greatly appreciated. And again, I want to thank you for coming. I was surprised to see you come in here, but I'm really glad you're here.
Well, from a state level, one thing that I would be pushing for over the next year is an in-depth look at our tax credit policy in the Commonwealth. As I'm sure many of you are aware, we spend billions of dollars every year on tax credits in the state without little understanding of whether they're actually working or not. And that's a lot of money that can be diverted someplace else. We did get better this year. We did pass a law of the General Assembly that puts a sunset date on all tax credits, which will force us to go back and look at those. But I think we need to put a moratorium on all tax credits until we get this under control, which will go a long way in providing more funding, too.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
I was going to say, Mr. Yost, the tax credits you're talking about, those that are given to businesses coming to communities, is that what you're, what you're talking about?
No, we just need to look at all of them in general and make sure they're working because the problem that we've run into is that we give out all this money in tax credits, but we don't have any clue whether we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. And we need to be fiscally responsible when it comes to that because otherwise, we are just stealing our money away.
Okay. And I also wanted to reiterate what Ms. Biggs said. We have about $600,000 additional funds, and at this point in time, we know that the school system is, is much lower than that, and we were not held hold harmless by the increase in the composite index. So I would like to just reiterate that we need to work with you in an effort to try to get other ways that we can raise revenue and also how we can better provide for the services that the localities need to give to their citizens, whether it's in transportation or in some other areas, education, healthcare. All of those areas are extremely vulnerable to, to have us moving around. And I hope that the VRS situation has helped us all to understand that you can't go raid entities of the state government that have funds that are supposed to be for certain purpose and are not paid back. And then to turn around and say to the localities, oh, well, you have to pay it back, even though we took it away as far as the state is concerned. But again, thank you very much. I agree with Mr. Brown. I don't think I've had any other people to come and speak to us, but, and reiterating what Ms. Biggs said, we need help. And, and I think a good way to get that is to work cooperatively with not only our legislators, but with other people in our state government to, to figure out ways to do what we do better. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure as Mr. Meadows could attest, I'm more than willing to help and work together. My local governments are very important to me, and I pretty much view my job as the conduit between local government and state government, just the middleman. And next Monday will actually be inaugurated, our first set of quarterly meetings I'm going to be having every, every quarter with all the county administrators and city manager in my district. So we continue and embellish the working relationship that we already have together.
There was one other thing that I forgot to say, and that is, when you were talking about the raises for the state employees, just make certain that that's not teachers. That it may be for college professors, and it may be for state employees, but it does not include public school teachers.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I just, all I want to say was, thank you for, for coming and do know that we appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a comment also, if I may. Again, as everybody said, thank you very much for coming. You have been working with our county since you've been on board as a delegate, and I think we all appreciate that very much. You're in contact with us on a regular basis and have answered all of our questions as we've gone along and supported a lot of our initiatives. Now, I'm going to ask, if you wouldn't mind, please, to finish out our public address session if you can, and listen to our work session if you can. It might give you some, you might hear some things that you might be able to help us with along that line. If you have the time to do it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for allowing him to have the time, and I think he's been very informative for us. There's nobody else signed up for this public address. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address. And I saw two hands go up pretty quick, so we'll start here first and then go here. And if you are wanting to speak, Ms. Trier, if you're wanting to speak, just kind of line up as you can so we can move it along. And Ms. Trier?
Good evening. My name is Karen Trier, and I live at 2171 Walnut Springs Road, Blacksburg. That's the Price's Fork District. I have lived there for thirty-seven years. I am a public school teacher. I have taught for twenty-eight years, and I'm a product of Montgomery County Public Schools. I was born and raised in Montgomery County. I just want to come forward to thank you ahead of time for those of you that will be voting for, in favor of, the 12-cent tax increase that supports the proposed budget. And the reason I'm thanking you ahead of time is because with that vote, you will be supporting people, you will be supporting public services, and you will be supporting educational programs for our children, not just bricks and mortar. I want to thank you. I am in support of the 12-cent tax increase, and I thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Trier.
I'm Allison Galway. I live at 606 Allegheny Street in Blacksburg. I'm here in support of the 12, 12-cent tax increase. And I've, I've heard a lot of interesting arguments against it tonight, and I find them interesting because I understand that the county administrator, the school board people, a lot of people have been applying their eyeballs and their calculators to, to the expenses of the school system and the county itself. And I don't think, even though I've been reading about it in the paper, that we've adequately stated why some of these huge increases are coming. It's like the post office. Everybody's complaining because they can't balance the budget. Nobody seems to understand that they have, in the last couple of years and for years henceforward, need to pay for the future, like fifty years of retirement now. And so they get this gigantic expense put on their budget and, and told to deal with it. And that's basically what you guys have been done to in terms of the VRS payment, in terms of a school that fell down, that was dangerous and was not fixable, the, in terms of the postponed capital implementations of the previous years, where we delayed and delayed until we had to replace a school. And now we're facing a bunch of chickens that have come home to roost. I went to a really good school system. It was one of the best in New Jersey, and it was in a little town called Somerville. I remember teachers that were demanding, and I remember that even though I didn't always like going to school, that it really prepared me. And that's the job of the county school systems. It's to prepare students for the future, not prepare students for the past, but to prepare students for the future. And the future is going to be looking a lot different than the past. Couple of points to compare Virginia Tech and the county schools is kind of weird. I work at Tech, and it's nothing like a county school system. We don't teach a bunch of students. We have students who live there. We have graduate students. We have gigantic research programs that cost a lot of money, and there's these big buildings, and there's a football team that seems to suck up a lot of dough from somewhere. Their fans were out there messing around in our child playground, and the place looked like hell when they got through. The, the comment that increasing taxes is a routine answer, the routine answer I've been hearing from the state and federal levels is cut taxes. So we've been cutting taxes for the past ten years, and we've been increasing expenses and ignoring the, the coming flood of baby boomers in retirement, of children, grandchildren of the baby boomers coming into the school systems. I mean, there's a huge pressure of people coming, and it's, our population is very different in numbers from when I went to high school in the 1960s. I think we must probably be weird, but I think we have to trust our public servants to do their jobs, and I don't think it helps when we act like armchair quarterbacks, saying, oh, well, this doesn't look like you need this, or you don't, doesn't look like you need that. The Somerville High School Art Department, which consisted of two people, saved my adolescence when my parents were separating and then coming back again, and when my father's alcoholism was causing problems with jobs, and when all kinds of crazy stuff was going on in my life, and I could go to the art department three or four periods a day and, you know, including the regular class, and, and do something constructive with my life instead of just hanging out with the shiftless people. Thank you very much for listening to my ramblings.
My name is Douglas Poffin. I reside at 125 Corbin Drive South of Virginia. My question tonight is, why does it cost more than twice as much to educate a child in Montgomery County in public schools as it does in private school? I've talked to two private schools in the area. Their average cost is $5,000 to $5,500 per year per child. Y'all are going to tell me that they get better education in public schools. One of the schools I talked to get an eighty-five percent college attendance out of their schools. They have to go through the same SOL, not SOLs, but the same college entrance exams as everyone else does. I'll have two grandchildren entering Montgomery County Public Schools for the first time in this thirteen, fourteen session, and you folks have given them their college gift. They'll have thirteen more years to pay for these schools after they graduate away from college. I hear you standing here, we're talking about state money this, state money that, federal money this, local money that. It's only one pie. It's us, regardless of where that pie is sliced from, whether it's sliced from the federal government, or whether it's sliced from local government, or whether it's sliced from the state government. It's all still the one pie. We're all paying for it out of our pockets. And tonight, we're looking out for the upper elite, in my opinion, and us other-class people that've worked our, all of our lives trying to make it. We're struggling month to month, many of them, in homes and everything else, trying to survive. Our families right here don't know whether they're going to have money enough to pay for their groceries and supply for their kids, and then we're going to take more taxes and life from them. And when y'all see this, when y'all stand up here, all y'all are pretty well-off people. When you see people in grocery stores, little snotty-nosed kids, raving clothes, trying to survive and feed their families, ask yourself, did this tax raise take more life from those people? And I have a little scenario, and don't cut me off, I'll get done. Taxing and all, and spending is like a drug habit. I looked up what the federal debt in the United States of America was in 1900, and it blew my mind. We had $2 billion in 1900, and it's only gone up. It's like being on drugs. They were on sleeping pills then, then the marijuana, and then the Bush murder of construction with Ron Harrow. And now we're on OxyContin and morphine, and then life support, brain dead, life for China to pull apart. Thank you.
Okay. Please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Robert Stone. I live at 520 Liberty Way in Christiansburg. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you about my ongoing concerns about taxes and tax rates for the near future. The determination of tax rates is a big job faced by the board and citizens of Montgomery County every year. It's good that the process has taken some time because information provided by the various interests requires time to digest. Here's the meat of the subject for me and my family. I'm on a fixed income. I own a home, therefore I pay taxes. It is important that I study the tax situations so that I may provide input and perhaps insert ideas that lead to better results in the process. What my goal is, is to limit my tax payments to amounts which are as low as possible because there are other items which require a portion of my assets. Those items are food, heat, water, fuel. That's, that's just some of the challenges. I'm not saying anything about denying anybody anything. I don't think we, as a county, deny children an education that's of very high quality. Think we need to discuss how we use the monies that we, we provide so that children get what they need, but we're not squandering funds. I can't afford to squander money. I can't afford to squander money. The budget from the Commonwealth was passed just last week, so there's not very much time in which to come to a tax rate decision. However, I hope that you will consider the impact of the new Virginia budget, which has in it, according to an email that I received from Delegate Yost, six hundred and fifty-two point nine millions of dollars. Some portion of that comes to this, uh, county. I hope you will fold that information into your decision for our tax rate this coming year. My personal note on this all is, and I've, I've heard the, the talk about the state should help us, and the feds should help us, and the homeowners should help us, but let me, here's my anecdote about that. When there's six hundred and fifty-two point nine million dollars for education in the Commonwealth's coffers, some of that money came from my left pocket. The source of the money is me. The increase in my property taxes in Christiansburg comes out of my right pocket. The money comes from me. If it came from the feds, it would still come from me. Therefore, in view of the fact that the Commonwealth is going to provide money for education out of my left pocket, I should think that the only lesser amount, that only a lesser amount would come out of my right pocket, in the form of my taxes. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Alan Ratfle, I live at seventeen fifty-one Ginger Lane in Blacksburg. Uh, as a son of a man who was on the board supervisors for about seventeen years, I want to thank you all for your service. I want to thank you because we've got a tough decision, we have a tough decision. I want you to take the tough vote to pass that tax increase, and when you do it, I want you to remember how much tougher the situation would be if that roof had fallen in twelve hours earlier, when the roof, when the gym was full. I also want you to take the tough action to figure out a way to have a capital improvements budget that we can avoid being in this situation again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Suzanne Ducker, I live at thirteen twelve Oak Drive in Blacksburg. Um, I really wasn't prepared to speak this evening, I've sent an email to you all yesterday, but there's just one point that several people have made throughout the evening that, on a personal level, I would like to address. When I was growing up, like so many of us, we were in classrooms with twenty-five, thirty, maybe thirty-five kids in the classroom, and the teacher did what I considered to be a remarkable job. And when you look on paper now, and you see in our classrooms, we might only have twenty, twenty-two kids in the classroom, you would think, wow, the teachers have an easy job now compared to what it used to be. But what I have found is different in this county, and I think across many counties in the United States, is we've changed the way we educate our children, and we now have a inclusive policy where a lot of the special needs kids that used to be down the hall in two classrooms that you never saw growing up are now included in the classrooms. And so you now have a teacher in the classroom that not only has to deal and teach twenty, twenty-two kids in the classroom, but they're now having to deal with children that are autistic, that have Down Syndrome, that are ADD, that are ADHD, and if they're lucky, they might get an aide to assist them in that classroom. And this aide is not a teacher, it's not someone who's been trained to deal with these children, it's pretty much a glorified babysitter to assist them. So I've had, my children have had twenty-two kids in the classroom, and there have been three or four severely disabled children in the classroom, and it is almost impossible for that teacher to control that class and teach at the same time. And about eight years ago, our family moved to Austria, and we were in the public school system there, and we went into the classroom, and there were thirty kids in the classroom, and the desks were piled one on top of the other. And I said, "Wow, how are these kids going to learn anything?" And over there, they're still doing it the way we used to thirty years ago. There was not a single special needs child in that classroom, you could hear a ping drop when you walked in that classroom, the teachers got it done. So the only thing I'd like to say is, on paper, it looks like it's easier for the teachers comparing twenty kids in a classroom to thirty, but when you go into that classroom and you see what that teacher has to do with those twenty kids, with that twenty-two kids, with the twenty-five children, it's not what it used to be. And I just strongly encourage you to look at the budget before you, to try and provide for the children today. I know it's not an easy position that you're in, but our schools have a good reputation. When we moved here thirteen years ago, Blacksburg High was ranked in the top hundred in the country for a public school, and we've now dropped into the four hundreds. So it's not like we're getting more money and things are going up, they're cutting the programs, they're cutting the activities that the children have, and I'd like to draw the line and start moving in the opposite direction. So please consider the twelve percent increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, my name is Little Jones. I reside at twenty-seven thirty Old Fort Road. Of course, tonight I address you with three hats. One, I'm chairman of the Montgomery County School Board, I'm a parent, and I'm also a citizen of the county. First, I begin my comments by offering my thanks to each and every one of you for your support of public education in Montgomery County. Over the past three years, we've dealt with some very serious challenges, they've been very difficult. We may not have always agreed on the solution, but we've always focused on what's right for the citizens and the students of Montgomery County. I applaud, and hopefully, well, thank you for the twelve cent increase. As a citizen and as a parent, certainly support that, and I know that you understand that the careful consideration that you've given to that. It's going to impact the school division, but we still will make cuts, and we still have to make cuts. If you look at what has happened in this budget session, it's kind of been, become the perfect storm. The composite index alone reduced contribution nearly two million dollars. The increase, mandated increase by the state on the VSR contributions is nearly two million dollars. And the end of the federal stimulus money was in excess of a million dollars. When you add that up, that's five million dollars before it ever hits the county. And if you also look back to the budget year two thousand oh eight and oh nine, and you compare it to this year, you will find that the state has reduced its funding by ten million dollars. I'm appreciative of Delegate Yost's comment, but what has happened is that sometimes the state does give it, but that also the state does mandate and take it away. I've sat in these chambers for the past several weeks quietly and silently and listened to numerous comments supporting public education and supporting the tax increase, but I've also listened to those who oppose the tax increase and would like something less. I'd like to respond to several comments and offer a more positive view of our school division. We've heard people say, with the famous editorial, "Stop building VHS." It's a puzzling statement when everything that was brought before our board, any other word, indicated that it was poorly constructed and it was unsafe. I would like to ask, why was it not built safely and correctly the first time? Answer that question, because if it had been, we very well may not be here, having a discussion about replacing Blacksburg High School. And I will also comment on that gentleman's statement earlier, had it fell, fallen twelve hours, sixteen hours earlier, there's a very good chance I wouldn't be standing before you, because I was in that building less than twelve hours before it collapsed, along with the rest of my family. I've heard people say that we chose brick, send more over teacher salaries, and no, we did not, we chose safety first. It was safety first. And I will tell you that whatever decision we made as a parent, I probably would not have sent my kids back to Blacksburg High School, knowing my name. We've heard of different things of spendful waste that were wasteful, and that we have big government. Yet I've heard no real specific examples of the waste. Is offering a competitive salary and benefits a waste? And that that competitive salary and benefits that we offer are on a scale comparative to other school divisions. We just don't set the salary to be spendless. We're trying to be competitive with other divisions. Is offering a competitive benefit package, ensuring that our employees have the appropriate health care, dental care, life insurance, and appropriate care for their families wasteful spending? Is reduction of spending of supplies wasteful? The reduction of field trips by thirty-three some percent, and we keep reducing them each year, is that wasteful? Is elimination of the governor's school programs and our kids to governor's school, we're sending them there to governor's school a waste? I skin, I don't see the details. That was a quick five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
My name is Kathy Duncan, and I reside at four twenty Majestic Drive here in Christiansburg. I am a product of Montgomery County Public Schools, and I have been serving now Montgomery County Schools for the last thirty years. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Burns said a few minutes ago about music education, since that's where I'm spending much of my time right now, in the fine arts. I wanted to let you know that Montgomery County, for the uptick time, has just received again the recognition of being one of the best communities for music education in America. We have to fill out a survey with detailed information about budgets and teachers, and there's lists of information that we have to send in, and again, we have been awarded that honor of being recognized as one of the best. It's because of your support, our school board's support, Mr. Jones was just here, it's hard to follow him after he gave such wonderful information, but it's because of this that we are recognized again. We are a wonderful fine arts community, and I'm here tonight to support the twelve cent increase. I know that it is hard for many people, I understand that we have many different visions in this room of what should happen, but education is the way to keep our democracy strong, and public education is what we have in this community to continue to do that, so I appreciate your support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Is there anybody else?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think many people that are, um, Karen Myers, I'm at forty-nine oh two Mount Tabor Road. I think many people that are sitting here tonight have their own personal opinions, they've expressed many of them. I have a twenty-one-year-old who went through Montgomery County Public Schools, started at Harding Avenue, went to Blacksburg Middle and Blacksburg High School. I have a eleven-year-old who's in sixth grade at Blacksburg Middle School. I'm very thankful of the school system that my children have been able to attend. Thanks, Mary. In trying to prepare for tonight, I decided that my words weren't worthy to be able to approach you with, so I had to find some others. And I found them in a book called All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten. And I would ask that you all take these words and apply them to your situation today. I think you learned them too. So All I Really Needed to Know I Learned in Kindergarten, all I really need to know about how to live and what to do and how to be, I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but there in the sand pile at Sunday School. These are the things I learned. Share everything. Play fair. Don't hit people. Clean up your own mess. Put things back where you found them. Don't take things that aren't yours. Say you're sorry when you hurt somebody. Wash your hands before you eat, and always flush. Warm cookies and cold milk are good for you. Live a balanced life, learn some and think some, and draw and paint, and sing and dance, and play and work every day some. Take a nap every afternoon. When you go out into the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands and stick together. Be aware of wonder, remember the little seed in the styrofoam cup? The roots go down, and the plants go up, and nobody really knows how or why, but we all are like that. Goldfish and hamsters and white mice, and even the little seed in the styrofoam cup, they all die, and so do we. And then remember the Dick and Jane books and the first word you learn, the biggest word of all, was "look." Everything you need to know is in there somewhere. The golden rule, and love, and basic sanitation, ecology and politics, inequality, and sane living. Take any of those items and extrapolate it into sophisticated adult terms, and apply it to your family life, or your work, or your government, or your world, and it holds true and clear and firm. Think what a better world it would be if all, the whole world, had cookies and milk about three o'clock every afternoon, and then lay down with your blankies for a nap. Or if governments had a basic policy to always put things back where they found them, and to clean up their own mess. And it is still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out into the world, it is best to hold hands and stick together. And those words are written by Robert Fulgham. So if you're wondering why, I would take your time to read this, I want you to know very clearly. It is time to stand behind our school board recommendations and do what is right. Not what someone else encourages you to do, tells you to do, or fights for you to do, but what you know in your heart, in your own heart, is right. You know as well as I do that children in our community have no voice. Well, they're citizens too. It is time for this board of supervisors to be heard on behalf of children. Your children, your grandchildren, our children, all children. Do what each of you learned in kindergarten. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give copies for you all of the exercise.
Boy, I feel like I stood up at the wrong time to follow that. My name is Mark Stern, I'm at thirteen ten Village Way South in Blacksburg. Um, and I have to say that, certainly sensitive to the idea that new taxes can be a scary thing, and any reason taxes can be a scary thing, but I'd also like to submit that no successful business has ever cut its way to prosperity. Um, it's always a balanced approach, that we look for efficiencies, but we also invest. And I would submit that there's really nothing in this country more valuable to invest in than our education. So, sitting here and hearing the broad suite of comments, I would just like to speak in support of our teachers, who I think are really some of the greatest heroes in our society, who often work under duress in difficult conditions, and also are typically very underappreciated. It's a hard job, I volunteer a couple times a month in my son's kindergarten class, and man, it's organized chaos, and I am just amazed watching the talent of these teachers and the passion they put into their work. Like any profession, you know, there's going to be a broad spectrum of talents and abilities and that, but I also know from my own scholarship, I'm a professor at Virginia Tech, and I study a lot of organizational psychology, that people perform best when they feel supported and the morale is high. And I think the worst thing we could possibly do for our education system here in Montgomery County and in the country is to undermine that in any way for teachers. So I really hope that, that we can come together and support the tax increase. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? More than once, twice?
Let's take.
Saying no one else, we'll close the public address, and, uh, we'd like to take about five minutes, and then we'll come back for our work session. Just don't run off, it might be a good one. While Ms. Perkins is working her way back, uh, the next item on the agenda is work session. Next item is addendum, and I don't believe we have one. And the next item is consent agenda. I gotta get my computer back on here.
I need the consent agenda.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Ms. Big?
Aye.
Mr. Maron?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Chair Polatus?
Aye.
Now you can do work session.
And the next item is work session. Do I have a motion, please, to go?
Aye.
Been moved and seconded and our work session.
Fiscal year thirteen budget. And at this time, I'd like to ask Carol to come forward and provide just a quick update on some items since last we met.
Everybody's got a copy. Where we left off, I guess, the last time, we had talked about some changes related to an increase in revenue along with some changes in VRS that happened at the state level. So we were asked to bring some information back to you, including what were those changes and how did it affect dollars and how would that impact the lower tax rate? So what you have before you is basically three different options, looking at a different tax rate or allocation of added funds to whichever place you may choose to, whether that be schools or whether it be reserved or whether it be to some other functions. So at this point, I'd like to just walk through each one of those steps and sort of talk about what they mean and what your choices are in terms of these dollars and what's changed from our last time. We are talking about changes to the advertised budget. So our point that we're starting with is the advertised budget. We talked about some information we've given you before about some additional local revenue, that coming from an increase in our estimate and sales tax, increase in the estimate for delinquent tax collection. Also, at the state level, there was a little bit of money from the restoration of the litter control grant and the restoration of the library grant. That was about eighteen thousand dollars. When you add all of our categories up, we're looking at three hundred and seven thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars in additional local revenue that is not currently in the advertised budget. As far as state funding for schools, I've heard a number of six hundred and some thousand floating around. What there is actually at this point in time, in addition to the advertised budget, is four twenty-one zero two eight. And it's my understanding from the school staff that a portion of that allocation was included in their budget, which in turn is included in the advertised budget of about two hundred thousand. So the additional funds to be added are four twenty-one zero two eight.
So that's the difference that I'm hearing? Like the money, they actually included over two hundred thousand in the budget?
Yes.
And so if you add that to the, yeah, because the numbers I saw were definitely six hundred and eleven thousand and six hundred and thirty-four thousand the next year.
The governor had put in some amendments that we had picked up earlier. We actually had that before we developed the advertised budget. So that's why instead of the full six hundred, it's only four twenty-one. Hundred and ninety-some thousand of that was already included in the budget we presented.
Right. We had thought it was higher, but when we looked at the totals and confirmed with the school staff, it's part of that was already in there. So for us, taking the starting point at the advertised budget, we're looking at the four hundred thousand number. Now, what I have in here is, again, you have the option of adding additional dollars to schools or switching off and lowering your county funds to schools. That's where you are at this point and it's a choice. On number three here, there were also changes. We've had several changes going back and forth with the VRS rate at the last minute. And so we had incorporated an increased VRS rate. We absorbed that within the general fund budget. If you remember when we presented the information, five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars from the increase in the VRS rate was absorbed within the base. We were able to absorb that with some other benefit increases because we've been under a hiring freeze for three years. With that hiring freeze, it's generated some surplus within the base along with, for those positions that have been filled, they have been filled at a lower rate. So between turnover and vacancy, eliminating positions and a hiring freeze, we have been able to generate a savings. That five oh five you see on the sheet was a portion of that. With the changes most recently from the VRS board, you were allowed to either elect to go ahead with the full increase that VRS had posted for you or take a lesser amount. It was either seventy percent of that or your fiscal year twelve rate. For us, it's the fiscal year twelve rate. So when we elect that, we then have a savings of the five oh five nine forty-nine. Under number four, we're talking about the five percent covering the five percent employee share. And we have elected or would recommend doing the five percent at this time as opposed to phasing it over five years. And the reason being is that our competitive jurisdictions within the town of Christiansburg and the town of Blacksburg, we understand are doing the five percent. If you don't do the five percent at this time, you're going to have two sets of employees and we're going to be having a significant recruitment problem, particularly with deputies, when you have the two towns that are already going ahead with the five percent in the county then having people having to pick that up and phase it in over four years. However, because of the lower or the change that lowered the VRS rate for us, we're able to absorb the three fourteen out of that lowered VRS rate. And again, we're talking about from the advertised budget. And that in itself puts nearly two hundred thousand dollars to be allocated to a different category. We've included the eight hundred dollars in all of these options to the brain injury services at the request of the board. And now we get to now to number six. Again, we're under the twelve cent tax increase. If you add the amount of increase in state dollars to the school budget and leave the county dollars flat where they are, you'll increase the expenditures on the school side, four twenty-one zero two eight. With the twelve cents at this point, you still have a balance of four nine eight two six seven to be allocated or reserved or however you wish to handle that. When you go to Plan B, you lower the rate to eleven cents. You're at eighty-six cents. Again, you're adding the local revenue. At this point, you're going to have to come up with the dollars to reduce the tax rate, switch out the county dollars for schools so that you would basically have a wash between the increase in state and the reduced county dollars. It's still covering the same VRS things and freeing up about two hundred thousand dollars more so that you still could allocate to a different source or reserve it, a different function or reserve it, two hundred and nineteen thousand two ninety-five. When you get to Plan C or the eighty-five cents, again, we're following the same process, but we're down to reducing county dollars by four eighty-seven oh five. And we've put on here schools mainly because with the reductions we've made already into the general fund. We have a general fund base excluding the Western Virginia Regional Jail cost that has absorbed all the benefit costs and is still within less than the current fiscal year rate. The majority of the growth and the two cents, in addition to debt service, have been posted to the school budget. So at this point, to get that much money back, we're looking at reducing some of that amount allocated to schools. On the second page, just breaks down the windfall amounts. And let me say one thing about the windfall. And we've always called it the windfall. I don't know who termed it that. It's just always been called that since I've been here. That is one-time-only money. And the reason, the recommendations that we have made through the advertised budget talk about either spending it only for those one things that we'll purchase one time between the county and schools or that we only need to purchase one time between county and schools or add to reserve funds is because it is only one time in nature. It is not included in any of the numbers for the operating budget. None of these funds are. If you so choose to do whichever plan and there are funds available and you choose to follow any of these recommendations for appropriation, you will make that appropriation separate on or after July one and you'll have the opportunity then to determine how you want to use it. Reserve funds, we don't appropriate. We reserve them and at such time we need to use them, we'll appropriate them on an individual basis. Things such as the capital reserve. If there was a project that came through, let's say school roof projects or something, a request would be made, it would come back to you, you would allocate it from the reserve and make an appropriation at that time. So I just wanted to be clear that the windfall monies or those recommendations are not included in your budget numbers at this time. So at this point, I'll be happy to try and address any questions or let you have your discussion.
I have a couple of questions in regards to the budget. And I believe we got an email late Friday from Craig trying to give us a better idea of things. And looking at the numbers, it looked like at one point in time, we were going to be about three hundred thousand dollars lower. It looks like now we're about five hundred thousand dollars above what our initial budget was. Is that a correct statement? And when I looked at that, the email, he sent that out, was right around four ninety-eight, four ninety-nine. Is that?
I'm looking at, are you talking about providing the schools with their four twenty-one in state dollars?
Let me see if I can pull up the email.
It's in that email supervisor Tuck, it's in point number six, where it says, changes from the advertised budget, including the impact of state budget, reflects total increased revenue of three oh seven, four eighty-two, and then total cost savings on VRS of one ninety-one, five eighty-five. I believe if you add those two together, it's, I believe that ties pretty close back to that four ninety-eight number that's the increase.
Matt was nice enough to pull it up. It's four ninety-nine sixty-seven. Is that number still correct roughly?
Yeah. What you're talking about is the number on here is four ninety-eight two sixty-seven.
It's the brain injury.
And that's less the eight hundred dollars for the brain injury.
Okay.
So it's that number, less eight hundred dollars. And if you are going to provide the four twenty-seven in additional funds to the schools.
Yeah, that's a good question. The four twenty-one, does that come from the state and is to be allocated by the state to schools?
Yes, ma'am.
If we took that money and put it in county dollars, then we would be diverting funds from what the state has allocated to the schools.
You'd just be reducing the county dollars you provide to the schools.
She's saying that. I know what she's saying, but I, I'm still not happy with it.
You don't have to do that at all. You can certainly allocate it. You can leave it alone. You can provide the additional dollars to the schools or you can switch them out. I mean, it's an option.
Ms. Perkins.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. So what you're basically saying, without the additional dollars from the state, the four hundred and twenty-one, oh, six million, whatever the number is, with the advertised rate of twelve cents, we would be, okay. Now, when we get about a half a million more from the state, would it be possible to maybe reduce that twelve to eleven and a half or something along those lines since we're getting some more money from the state? Additional money. So I guess holding out by some of the people was a good thing.
Well, if you, if you go down to eleven cents, then you're not giving the schools the full, the total, four twenty-one, oh twenty-eight.
Eleven and a half cents. What would eleven and a half cents do?
Well, I just, the cent is three fifty. Well, that's, that's part of what I was asking too.
That's what, I think that's what she was asking too.
That's what I was really trying to get at. So it does seem that the twelve cents actually really gives the money to the schools.
If you.
That the state intended, right?
At the twelve cent rate, if you don't change anything from the recommended budget, you're basically giving the schools an additional four hundred and twenty-one oh twenty-eight because that's the dollars that came from the state. We had already covered that in the recommended budget. So if you don't pull the county dollars back, you're giving them in essence an additional four twenty-one oh twenty-eight. And then at the twelve cents, it still leaves you four hundred and ninety-eight thousand two sixty-seven that you can allocate to whatever you want to do at the twelve cents.
If you were going to allocate that balance to schools, in addition to the four twenty-one zero two eight at twelve cents, you would be providing the schools an additional nine one nine two nine five in expenditures.
Okay.
They have that much more money to spend.
Thank you. And so right now, what they ask for in their budget is what, about five and a half million? Less than what they need?
I believe that number was about.
I'm thinking that that's a figure.
The shortfall, the shortfall right now, I have the thing in front of me, is five point four million dollars.
That's what I thought.
Five point four million dollars.
That's what I thought.
With the twelve cents, and if you include that four hundred and twenty-one back in, it's just.
Then it's five million.
It's five million.
There's still five million dollars short.
There's still five million dollars short.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Curry.
I just want to be sure all of that's clear.
I've got a couple of things here that, I'm looking back on the old, we've got it today, but it must be old because the figures are not all the same. The windfall estimate at eighty-seven cents is what it says. And it says attachment A.
It was on the, it was on the email Friday.
And the Friday report.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. All right. When I look at that, it says that what we were looking at under windfall was a million dollars for capital, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in facilities, two hundred thousand in reserve, fuel reserve, fifty thousand for the sheriffs, and a hundred thousand for shelter, animal shelter reserve.
A million.
Yeah, a million dollars for the animal shelter reserve. And I don't see that in any of these things that you just went over.
It's on the second page.
Just under the windfall part. Is that what?
That's where it's coming from. That's where it's coming from.
Right.
Okay. Catch on this is it's got the one before this, and I don't know what happened to it, but it had a rainy day about a couple of weeks ago. It says rainy day had a million dollar current and another million dollars to be added to Which would have brought, which brought the rainy day fund to 2 million dollars.
Oh, thanks for that.
I'm not familiar with something that added both of them, but I could be getting confused between the recommendation from the windfall and the current reserves. But your Attachment A should break out the current reserves plus the recommendation for the windfall for the grand total.
Yeah. One of my questions is with 4 million dollars, 4812, no, it's 3 million dollars, a little lower, 3,488,000 dollars.
3 million dollars on your Attachment A, plus our recommendation has 1,148,610 in one-time items between the schools and the county.
So it's 4.2 million.
So it's 4.2 million when you add both of those together.
4.2 million of windfall money.
Yes.
And that's going to be reduced from what you've got on here down to 3,488 on the Attachment A.
That's the current.
3,488.
That was current.
It's current.
That was current.
Right. You're adding 2, 3 million.
And then additional 3 million dollars. So we're going to have 6,488,746 in reserves.
That's correct.
You know, if there's ever been a need for a rainy day reserve, it appeared to me that we would be in it, rather than trying to build more at this point in time. We should be using what it was set us out for, and that is a rainy day. And we certainly would have to say that we've got a rainy day. When we've got that much need and that much money in windfall, it seems to me that we should be telling our citizens, hey, wait a minute. That's a point and a half of real estate or taxes that you shouldn't have to pay.
Then what do you do next year?
You hope it's a better year, and you put some money aside for a rainy day.
Well, isn't that what we do?
You're going to still have some rainy day fund here.
Not if you take it.
Pretty much what we've been doing, that's why we're in some of that now.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to take it all off of the rainy day. You can take part of it off of there, you can take some of it off of capital. You've got 500,000, and you've raised it to a million. Facilities, we've got a bunch of new facilities, shouldn't need a lot. And it's gone from 723 to 750, or adding 750, rather, and making it a total of 1,473. So there's monies there to drop this without hurting the schools. It's not going to hurt us. It surely will help the people that's out here paying taxes that are way too much to start with.
I think one of our concerns we had been looking at was that if you put it toward ongoing operating costs, anything out of the reserves, then the following year, you're going to have to pick that up, either through a tax increase or additional resources or something. And so, how much of that do you want to have to do in the upcoming years?
We don't have to pick it up if it just drops and the taxpayer don't pay it. You only have to pick that up if it was not a superficial thing laying out there that we can pick up.
I would, what we have done is pulled out some things from the school budget and the county budget, the total of about 1.2 million, to do just that with, to pay for one-time-only things, that we would not necessarily, would they be reoccurring, and we'd have to pick them up in the next year. I think that's our concern, would be if you put it behind salaries or benefits or VRS increases or some...
Absolutely. That's why we shouldn't do that. What we should do is give it back to the citizens.
What if there's a tornado?
What if there's a tornado?
What, that rainy day fund is not simply to be raided because we're uncomfortable about raising taxes and kicking the can down the road. I mean, that's for, to my mind at least, I mean, that seems to be for an emergency. I mean, and now, if we get, yeah, we hope that revenues will go up next year or something like that. I mean, what, what happens then?
What if the sun doesn't come up tomorrow?
Well, we already know the state, the state's already done their budget for the next two years, right? And we already have seen, unless a miracle happens, that basically the money back's going to be about the same next year. So, you know, if you're counting on there's going to be, you know, a sudden big thing, you know, maybe then would be the time to look. But if you use this one-time money, it's just, you're just going to have to face the same problem next year, and you're going to be in the same place with raising taxes.
I don't think so. You know? Let me... Yeah, let me, let me... Can I say something, Gary? Give you one scenario here, and as of right now, if you'll get on your computer and look it up, the Census Bureau says that the average cost of a house, the average cost of a house is $180,000. They also say that average wage is $65,321. Now, when I come in here and I ask our government folks that are doing all of our figures for us and setting up all these budgets, they tell me that the average cost of a house is $209,870. So from 2010 census to now, the taxes on the average home has gone up, or the price of the average home, let me get that first, the price of the average home, has gone up That's $29,870 more than the 2010 census. Now, if you look at your average wage, the 2010 census says it's $65,321. Our government, right here, right now, are figuring average wage in Montgomery County at $43,229. That's $22,092 less than the 2010 census. At 87 cents tax rate, we are charging people of Montgomery County, right now, before anything else, $259,87 cents too much for their taxes on average. If they're paying that now, and we're supposed to be looking at these figures, if it, you know, we're running a scam service, looks like the name. You tell them it's one thing, it's another, and what they put on the census, that's no good anymore, because we can't use those figures. And they're not off a little bit. If it's off a little bit, I understand. But they're off $29,870 on the value of a property, average property, and $22,092 less money that people are making than what the census says they're making. So I'm looking, anybody that can, to explain that to me, because I sure don't understand how we can get by with charging more than what houses should be worth.
Mr. Creed, I believe we talked about this two weeks ago, and that there was a discussion...
We did.
Yes, we did. And there was a discussion about how there are different, especially in a college town, it's difficult to calculate both the average median income for a, for a family, but also the average house price. And there are different bureaus, in fact, different parts of this particular government, as you said, that use different numbers. And we were trying to figure out why that was. And I believe we had asked, maybe somebody could look into that, and nobody had reported back about that. So it's a little bit misleading, I think, to come back, after we had this conversation two weeks ago, to suggest that house prices have gone up so dramatically in two years, and income has dropped so dramatically in two years, when, I believe, I mean, you were there during this conversation, which we talked about, that there was, there was a little bit of flexibility there, and that we couldn't decide whether the average house price was actually this amount, or the average income was, was X amount.
I don't think that 30%, 30% of wages is something that's close. It's 30% less.
And we have a university of 30,000 poor people, basically, because they don't report income. And that either artificially inflates or deflates, depending on how you count them and where you put them.
And do all of them have homes? You're going to try to explain that one away? $29,870 difference between the price of a house? They don't even own homes, because they don't have any money. That's what you just said.
Some of them do own homes, in fact. I can point you to several of them in my own neighborhood that own homes. I mean, this is a debate, this is a debate about numbers, and you're using them in a particular way, which is ironic, because two weeks ago, you're using it a very different way. And that's, that's the only thing that I'd like to point out.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the board?
Could I make a statement first, please?
Absolutely.
Well, it's in my train of thought, thanks to Mr. Creed. And I'm going to ask Ms. Edmonds to qualify this for me, if she will. You don't have to get up. I'm looking at the windfall. All right. And currently, in our reserve funds, we have $3,488,746.
That's correct.
We are, in this budget proposal, we are requesting to increase that by $3 million.
That's correct.
If we requested to increase that by 1 and 1/2 million, would that just affect that portion and not change anything above that line in the budget?
The windfall dollars are not in the budget, so...
They're not part of this 12 cents?
They're not in the budget.
Or 8 cents or 10 cents?
They are...
Well, they're in reserve.
They are in reserve. You get, the windfall dollars are generated from the one-time...
I understand that. I know it's coming from...
And so what we're recommending is to add to your reserve funds, so that you can use them as needed and appropriate them based on how the projects come up. If you only put 1 and 1/2 million in reserve, you still have 1 and 1/2 million, but it is only one-time-only money.
I understand.
You're not going to get it again.
All right. Now, we've got a lot of things on this list. Okay? Some of it is doubling what we had. There's a whole new million dollars for, I'm going to call it a cat house, because that's basically, you know...
And dogs.
It's, it's an animal shelter. But we have to build mainly, I know we need a dog, a new animal shelter. All right. I'm just wondering, is this the appropriate time to put a million dollars aside, or maybe we can put 500 aside this year? We have other ways. And I always say this, we have other ways that we should look at to gain revenue. Okay? We fight with our delegates continually. We fight with the state. We have ideas sometimes that might generate business. Okay? Generate revenues that we don't have access to today. I'm sure in your projections for next year, you have the anticipated growth from several of our new industries. We have one that's going to be 220, 220 people?
Mm-hmm.
220 people coming in, that hopefully will take people off unemployment, or give them better-paying jobs than what they have, you know? So I'm assuming we have, and I know they have an incentive to come here, but it's also going to put money back into the economy by people working either at better jobs or who don't have jobs now. And Marty, tell me if I get wrong here, but I've talked to our county attorney and to our county administrator, and I've passed out a letter earlier tonight about the economic development by allowing liquor-by-the-drink in the county. And there is a legislative request we can make that has been done in other localities. And the two localities I would like to see this in is our two areas that are ready for development by people who cannot market their properties to the type of clientele that would bring us good restaurants. Meal Stacks is a big funder. Okay? And I'm not saying we're going to have it tomorrow, if we do this tomorrow. Okay? It's a long-term thing. But that will again generate jobs, will generate meal stacks. Okay? So if we sacrifice a million and 1/2 dollars this year, and the economy doesn't get any better, and we have to raise taxes the 2 cents next year, so be it. But if we can generate revenues through new industries and things, that will help pay for that, I think. Okay? So you're telling me if I take a million and 1/2 out of capital, that can affect how much money we have in the tax rate?
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out where we're going here. The windfall at 12 cents is where the 3 million comes from, plus the 1.2 million that the recommendation is to allocate one-time-only. If you reduce that by 1.5 million, are you suggesting it be allocated to a different reserve? Because the windfall at 12 cents is going to be the 3 million, whether you allocate it in this manner or a different manner.
I'm having a hard time communicating my point. Mr. Creed, one of our constituents said, now we need to use a rainy day fund. Okay? Maybe it's inappropriate time. Well, maybe we don't use it all. All right? If we don't, of course, we're not putting any money into that this year. Okay? But we are putting 3 million new dollars. So instead of sacrificing the school board budget and sacrificing the county budget, can we hold off on contributing to some of these reserve funds?
And use it in the operating budget?
I don't think you're using it in the operating budget. I think you're reducing it. Am I not correct?
Here, let me see if I can help. I think what you're suggesting is even, even at a 10-cent tax increase, you're looking at a windfall, and we're going to quit using that word, I hate it, we're looking at additional one-time money.
Call it something else.
Yeah. We're looking at additional one-time money, because the way the county does tax billing of about 3 and 1/2 million dollars. What you're suggesting is to take a million and 1/2 of that 3 and 1/2 and appropriate it into the operating budget, so that we don't have to use the operating revenues to balance the budget through taxes. And I guess the only thing I want to say to that is, and I think Carol's hit on it, but I just want to reiterate it again. And I understand the concerns about a rainy day, because lord knows, this has been a horrible budget year. But the concern about using capital monies, one-time monies, to balance your budget is the best analogy I can give you is it's just like taking money out of your savings account when you're paying your bills at the house. You can take your money out of your savings account and put it in your checkbook and pay your bills, but what... your bills, but what happens is next year, if you continue to do that, you've either gotta take more money out of your savings account or you've gotta start making more money somewhere else. What's gonna happen if you take the money, if, if, using your example, Chair Politis, if you take that million and a half dollars out of one-time money and use that to balance this year's budget, when we start working on next year's budget, we're, we're, we start off a million and a half short.
What, what he's... That's not what he's saying. What he's saying is...
Okay.
Charge ten cents instead of twelve cents.
Okay, you can do that.
And that's all he's saying, period. If you take and figure it right back up on ten cents rather than twelve cents, then you, you're down there.
So, you are reducing your reserve funds on the sheet as you are reducing, and you're not putting it back into capital, are you? Or back into operating, are you? What they're doing there?
If you go to ten cents, you only collect that...
If you take the second page of the three options, and Plan C says eighty-seven, but it should say eighty-five at ten cents.
Whoops, I didn't, didn't catch that, sorry.
Boy, that's wrong. Okay. It should be eighty-five and ten cents. Then, the reserve fund is being reduced in capital and in facilities in this recommendation. Yeah.
Okay. And it's not affecting... Or is it? You know, this is where I'm confused.
Well, your reserve fund for capital, if you are looking at Attachment A, you currently have a half a million dollars in it. Under the twelve-cent plan, you'd add a million dollars to it, so your capital reserve would be 1.5 million. Under Plan C, at a ten-cent rate, your 500,000 is there current and you'd add to it 750. So, it's being reduced based on a recommendation to reduce capital and to reduce facilities. Facilities has 723. The recommendation would be at twelve cents is to add 750, and that's 1.5 million. At eighty-five or ten-cent increase, facilities would go from 723, add 350 to it, little over a million.
And, and we have in reserve monies already.
Yes, we do.
All right. So, if we don't add some of this, is what I'm saying.
Correct. But I think you're asking is, will it affect the operational budget? And that's the third column on the first page showing that it'll reduce school funding by almost five.
I understand that.
Okay. I'm, I'm still...
But I'm missing something. My, my mind isn't working right.
Well, I still think what you're saying is if you reduce it to ten cents, what you're trying to do to cover some of that is take some of that one-time money and pull it back into the operational budget. I think that's what you're saying.
No.
Well, I don't know how else you could do it.
We, we are taking money, and I, I'm sorry to be so brain-dead tonight.
Fine.
It's been a long week, and I don't mean to... But, you, you are putting money in there with the twelve cents, correct?
Yes.
You're putting money in all of these reserve funds with the twelve cents.
With twelve cents, with eleven cents, and with ten cents.
Correct.
All would add to your reserve fund.
All right. So, my question is, if we reduced the money we are putting into those reserve funds, how are you taking it out of operating funds? You're adding tax dollars. How are you taking it out of operating funds? I, I don't...
We're not taking anything out of the operating fund.
So, if we reduce it, if we reduce it... If I put 500,000 into a animal shelter instead of a million, does that not save me a little over half a penny?
It doesn't save you anything on the tax rate.
Okay.
Unless you use it in the operating budget.
Unless you pull it into operations.
Which is good for one-time monies.
Yeah. It's like, it's like two pies. You have an operating budget.
I understand that. I understand, but it's all tax-related money.
Yeah.
If you charge two cents less, somebody's gonna say, "And that's the tax rate."
Yeah, I understand.
Now, that's, that's just fact. If you charge two cents less, and you can make up what dollars are reduced to the school of 480,000 dollars out of the windfall that's left, out of the ten cents that you're charging. They just said yes, so don't...
You can do it, but it's one-time money.
You can put it in there. Next year, you'll have to make up 480,000.
481,000 before you open up the door.
I think the thing is that, that you have to understand...
It's one-time money. If we take money out of those reserves, just, let's go to ten cents. Reduce the dollars to the schools by 480,000 dollars. Okay? That's ten cents. So, you're taking more money away from the school's operating budget. This is operating budget that we're on this front page, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand that.
Eleven, eleven, and ten. On the second page, we're only talking about a one-time infusion of money in, and it needs to be used for one-time things. Because any time that you take some money out of the operating budget, and you take it out of reserves or you take it anywhere, you're gonna have to pay for it the next time around if you put it back in the operating budget.
But if you give it to the schools as...
Yes, because...
...one-time-only money.
Well, if you give it to them as one-time...
You give, you give them that 480,000 dollars as one-time-only money, you do not have to put it back.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the board?
Yes.
What has to be one-time-only money?
Man, I'm far off. I'm, I'm missing something, you know?
For me, this is a new experience. And many of you saw the emails that I sent out in February, March, and I got a lot of great responses from the staff, and I want to thank them. I got a lot of emails saying, "Chris, you need to stop Blacksburg High School." I talked with Marty right away, and if we did that, there's a lost profit provision in that contract, and that shift is saved. So, we've gotta address the debt, and we've gotta address the service of that debt. When I ran, I ran because I wanted to do a good job for years and not worry about whether I was gonna be re-elected or not. And that's why I tried, in, in trying to come up with something, I couldn't figure out a tax rate without trying to figure out a budget. Now, some of my numbers have just recently changed a little bit, whether it's the 611 dollar, 611,000 dollars, or the 421, whichever, I used the 500,000 dollars. But I wanna go through, and, and what really got me started thinking was an editorial by Christian Trayball. And y'all remember that editorial, it ran on March the 4th, and it did what editorials are supposed to do. It started making me think a little bit. And he said Montgomery County is cheap, and that we don't pay enough taxes, and he used Roanoke County's property tax rate as a dollar nine. Roanoke County is about the same size, give or take a few thousand, as Montgomery County. Even with the ten-cent tax increase, I looked at the numbers and I started thinking eighty-five cents. And I started thinking, wait a minute, maybe he's right, Montgomery County is cheap. So, I started sending some more emails out. And I started asking, what are some of the services that Roanoke County provides that we don't provide? They provide a paid fire and rescue. They have a police department separate in addition to the sheriff's department, so you have two sets of administration costs. They have county-wide trash pickup. So, if you live in Catawba, you get a garbage man who comes out and picks up your garbage. So, if I live in Walton, I'd be having somebody come pick up my garbage. If I live in Shawsoo. They also shelter and provide animal control for the cats. By volunteering, 394 of our citizens give back to our county to the tune of 11.9 billion dollars every single year. It would take, I'm fully correct in an email, seventeen-cent tax increase to replace those volunteers. When I volunteered, when I did a ride law, I didn't know how much time they had to give up to be on the rescue squad. It's forty hours a month, that includes training and being on call time. That's over an hour a day. I'm talking with Neil Turner. I said, "Well, tell me some of the employers where these folks work for." There are a lot of blue collars. Ten of them alone work at Walmart. If we keep raising taxes, will these individuals be able to continue to volunteer, or are they gonna have to pick up a second job? And looking at the differences, it's huge on law enforcement. They pay 20 million dollars a year. We pay 11.7. Difference of 8.6 million. And again, thanks for the staff for providing those numbers. You look at solid waste costs. They get curbside pickup, four and a half million dollars. We spend 1.75 billion dollars. Difference of 2.7. Animal control costs, there's almost double, because they do shelter cats. That's an expense, and so really, it's almost double. And I love to point out that the dog on the right is my shelter dog that I picked up from our shelter. The left is my great-grand niece. If you had to, if you put in the same things and provided those services, we would be at a dollar eight point seven, almost exactly a dollar nine. And then you start thinking, well, wait a minute, what if I live in the town of Christiansburg, the town of Blacksburg? You add another 22 cents if you live in Blacksburg, another 11.26 cents if Christiansburg, but what's Benton's property tax rate? Three. So, when you start saying that Montgomery County is cheap, I, I don't think that's true. When we start looking at, and, and I know that y'all, many disagree, but I think when you're talking about capital funds and you're paying for schools, that's part of our budget. And that's part of the education budget. When we look at 2012, 2013, if we cover the debt service and basically look at that 500,000 dollar cut, we're still talking about an eighteen percent increase to education. 550,000 in one-time monies going to them, and 200,000 using to purchase school buses, which is listed in their operational budget that's running 182,000 dollars. We're still increasing, and education spending is still on the rise in Montgomery County. But there's some other ways we can save money. If we pass on one-time monies right now, we have currently, you have to have paid parking. We have to comply with that. If, at, out at Sheila Motor Mall Park, if we just simply pass this ordinance that allows gravel parking, just like Roanoke County has, then we can save the county 148,000 dollars in one-time money. 148,000. And I also want you to think about, why do you pay something? So, you can push snow. How many people are out on a softball field when it's snowing? We can utilize it, and it's also green. Less drainage, and, and we will be able to save that kind of money. Again, thanks to the staff for providing those answers. Using law library funds. Right now, every year, we are basically required by the state to set aside 15,000 dollars. We currently use 6,700. But we have an opportunity here, and this opportunity, this one time, to be able to take the square footage of our law library, because the code says we have to pay for shelters, and take that money and bring it as, again, one-time money. We're not gonna get another shot at this. But we also get to pay for the furniture. That roughly works out to be about 93,000 dollars, give or take. One of the other things I'd like to see us do is to be able to take some money, set aside, train some librarians, and be able to do legal research in Shawsoo, legal research in Blacksburg, and eventually legal research in Christiansburg as well, at the library. Those, that is allowed, and I talked with Marty about that.
Yeah. And I, I just want to tell you, I brought that up at the library board meeting, so you probably need to have Paula come in and address that, because there had some real concerns about that as far as staff.
If, if they don't want the additional monies, that's okay. But we can take those monies from the reserve fund, buy the computers, and then we can use it for operational cost. We can pay those librarians a little extra money to help individuals with legal research. Where do the one-time monies come from? And a lot of people don't understand it. And I went with some very conservative numbers. You'll notice I'm about 100,000 dollars less on my numbers. It comes from, we collect the taxes in June, the budget doesn't really start until January, so we have these monies left over. When I went ahead and added the monies over from the law library, you're right, it's 3.4. If we end up with 3.5 million, that still gives us about another 100,000 dollars of one-time money. What are some of the differences in regards to the ten versus twelve? What I want to do is save the 148,000 dollars. And I know that we have to address animal shelter needs, but I don't think that we need to set aside a million dollars. We only need to set aside, at this point in time, 250,000. In regards to purchasing capital, uh, expenses, again, as an operational budget for the, the school board, but we're using one-time monies to purchase those, buy the county, and then donate them. In regards to that, I ran that by Marty as well, and he provided that perfectly proper for us to go out and buy the school buses and then provide those over. I have a different thought on things also. We have the industrial park that is full now when Backtrack Country comes in. We don't have another larger tract of land to be able to entice another big employer. We need that. And we need to, if, if we only get the money one time, we need to start setting aside monies for that. Well, number six is one of the hardest things for me. In these last two months, I've been able to work with a lot of good people here in the county, and those are the people who are providing me all the information, helping me to be able to prepare this. We have 150,000 dollars, that's operational money. I would not, at this point in time, in the largest tax increase, would not go ahead and make that a part. As far as reducing the proposed increase, I looked at my numbers, it's a little bit larger than what they were, and again, some of the numbers changed from a Friday to the day. Reduce the capital reserve, or reserve and add additional funds to the industrial park. I gave, basically do a breakdown of 3.91 million. The one-time budget request, I didn't really touch. The capital reserve, I'd reduce 250,000. Facility maintenance reserve, purchasing the new school buses, 200,000. Technology and roof repair for the schools, 550,000. Comp time for the sheriff's department, animal shelter, and then 491,000 dollars set aside for a new industrial park, and 200,000 dollars for the fuel reserve. In the last nine years, there have been many schools that have been built, but just not for District B. District D's gonna have a new high school. District C's got a new high school, new elementary school. In regards to District D, you're gonna have a new high school, and you're gonna have a remodel of middle school. District B, you've got a new high school, a new Price's Fork Elementary. District F and District G, a new high school. It will be years before the county's debt is reduced sufficiently to allow Christiansburg High School be upgraded. This is numbers that we got early on, and I just simply put it in my PowerPoint presentation. Basically, nine years before we're going to be at appropriate levels to be able to borrow again. Nine years. What is District B asking this board to do? Allow the county's largest tax increase in its history. And as far as I know, I haven't heard anything different. Ten cents would be enough. I do add some things from the school board, and I would like to see an actual review of the inclusion program that was talked about a little bit tonight. When we look at some of the inclusion numbers, that we're seeing that we include between 86, 84 percent. But we're not getting the test scores. We're not, and, and we're not even towards the top. If this was working, and our inclusion program was at the top, hey, listen, I'm there, these are kids with special needs. But perhaps we need to actually review the inclusion program and see. And that's something that we can't do. That's gotta be the school board. I'm asking the school board to do part of that work themselves, to sit down and crunch their numbers and go through everything. Now, I know I've done this a little bit differently than folks have done in the past. I won't take up any more of your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any further discussion?
I'm gonna go out of work session.
Do I have a second?
I want to say one thing right quick.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the work that you done, Chris, in your presentation. Okay. Second.
I still move that we go out of work session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Spitz?
Aye.
Chair Levis?
Aye.
Um, I gotta get back to my agenda here.
That's right.
Got thrown off a little bit.
My turn. Next thing we have are is the old business.
No.
Old business.
You were short of that. Second.
Ordinance temporarily changing the E1 precinct polling place. And this was discussed in a public... And this was discussed in a public hearing earlier this evening. Do I have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution setting the real estate tax rate and other property taxes. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move the twelve cents for the real estate property tax.
I'd like to second that, please.
Twelve cent increase.
Yes.
Okay.
You did it already.
What was that?
Twelve cent increase for real estate property tax, two dollars and forty-five for the tangible personal property tax, one dollar and eighty-two cents for machinery and tools, and three dollars and five cents for the merchant's capital, as stated in the resolution. So that would bring the real estate property tax up to eighty-seven cents.
Do I have a motion and I have a second? Any further discussion?
I'd like to talk about it a little bit more in regards to it. And just in one of the things, in looking at coming up with a million four dollars, how do you address those kind of cuts as far as difference between the two budgets? And you look at the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You look at the five hundred thousand dollars we've got that's coming in. That gets us down to about nine hundred thousand. The hundred and fifty gets us down to about seven hundred and fifty thousand. The reducing the increase to the schools, because we're still giving them an additional two point three million in operational funds by five hundred thousand. And then the purchase of the school buses puts us right there. And so for me, I think the twelve cents is too much. And I understand and I appreciate, again, your positions, but that's where I'm at. And I believe that we can do it for ten and we should.
Right. Mr. Tuck, I, Mr. Politis, Mr. Tuck, I do appreciate your presentation to us. I wish I had received it sooner because I would like to have looked over it a little bit more if you had given it to us two weeks ago. It would certainly have been helpful to me. Oftentimes, we are asked to, we get things just on the spur of the moment. And I certainly do appreciate the fact that you spent a great deal of time doing that and that that's where you're from. So, but I just wanted you to know, I appreciate your giving us the information that you gave. But I really would have liked to have had a little bit of forewarning about it.
I couldn't get the numbers. We didn't have a budget from the state.
Well, we had a lot of this. And we could have had it Friday, maybe, of this week. So at any rate, I understand that there was a lot of it. Because what Mrs. Edmonds gave us tonight was really a lot of new money, too, that was there. And it's hard to sometimes always process those things at that point in time. So I can appreciate that, too.
And we didn't get the final numbers, really, until Friday at about four. I think I looked at my email about four thirty.
All right, I appreciate that. I understand.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to speak, just speaking in regard to the twelve cents right now. And I want to, I want to state why I support it. And Chris, thank you for your work. That was, that was a lot of work that you did to pull that together. I'm basing the support of the twelve cents on hearing from the people that came to the public hearing, the emails and the emails particularly from my own constituents. But it goes a little bit further than that in that when I attended the school board meeting and was made aware of the proposed cuts that were going to happen with even a twelve cents and knowing what I know about this, you know, what goes on in schools, I feel like this is the right thing to do. I feel like it's a balanced thing to do. And I'm still, it's not that I'm not concerned about people that are negatively impacted. And I think that we've had citizens come and speak to us about that. And I think that we all need to be very diligent about what we're doing as far as spending monies. But I feel that, and I know, that this is the right thing to do at this time as far as the twelve cents goes. So I will continue, and you know I will continue, to work as hard as I can to do differently at the state level and to also, if there's anything we can do for our disabled and elderly, that if we could further that as far as tax relief. And that's all I'm gonna say about the twelve cents.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Well, in favor of the twelve cents for various reasons. I think when we started this process, we started at like an increase of twenty-four plus cents. And when you look at that, I know that twelve cents is not gonna fund the schools hardly enough. So people are gonna lose their positions in things like this. So being, we here at the county, and I think we've frozen positions and so forth, we've already tried to cut spending into the tune of about thirty-five to forty employees. And you hear from the current employees, hey, we just can't stand but so much, but the positions are frozen. So I know twelve cents is not gonna do a whole, it's gonna do some for the schools, but there are gonna be positions lost. Well, we've been losing some on the county side for a while or two. And it's, it's difficult, a very difficult decision. It's gonna be difficult for my family, my friends, and so forth. But when you look at a hundred thousand dollar home, it's what, ten dollars more a month is the way it's figured? And with the cost of everything else, that's gonna be a big ten bucks, a large amount, added to the budgets and things. And so that's, I mean, I could talk about this all night long, but I just think that we have to bridge, in my position, I think we have to bridge the gap between the haves and the have-nots. And if I listened to everybody who emailed and spoke, we would be upgraded twenty-four, twenty-five cents. But, and you listen to the people on this end, there has to be some sort of balance in there. And we have to reach that balance so that the have-nots don't get drugged along the way with the haves in trying to address our state shortcomings issue.
Ms. Creed?
I'm gonna state what I have stated a time or two on different things. That is, that I would rather charge someone a dollar less than they can pay than to charge someone a penny more than they can pay. And I think that this board has finally reached that point, that you're gonna see some people that can't pay it. I hope you sleep well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna sleep fine, so. And the reason that, I thank you, Mr. Tuck, for your presentation. The thing that you left out in your difference between Roanoke County and Montgomery County is also how much they spend on their schools, which is a hundred and fifty-six million dollars as opposed to our proposed budget, which is ninety-one million dollars. And that is, there's per pupil increased cost of about two thousand dollars. Now, we were hit particularly hard this year. This is not an ideal situation. But the thing that brings me to this twelve cent, that supporting the twelve cents, is that even with this, even with the increased county support for the public schools, there are sixty-plus positions in the schools that will be gone. There, in addition to perhaps closing schools, in addition to pay cuts in the form of furloughs in the course of increased healthcare costs. This is not saving the schools in any way, shape, or form. It's putting a Band-Aid on, you know, a very serious wound. And so this is what we can do. The final thing that I'll say as we go ahead and vote and move ahead to vote on this is that this is the beginning, I think, of a new world. Is that this state funding, as much as we're gonna want it to come, just isn't gonna come. Is that we are increasingly gonna have to pay for the things that we value ourselves. And going on again, the emails that I received, that we all received, because they were copied to all of us, the number of people who came to the public hearing, which I watched every minute of on video, and the people that showed up, for example, tonight, is that there is great support for public education. And ultimately, that's what this is about. Thank you.
Ms. Perkins?
Well, I've listened a lot. I've listened to my fellow board members and I've listened to the people who've come here. And I've given a lot of thought to it. Mr. Gabriel, I think you're right. Thank you very much for pointing out to us that even with twelve cents, we are making a little bit of headway, but not much. That this isn't, like you say, saving the school system. Also, Mr. Tuck, I do appreciate everything, again, that you've done and that you've said. And I do appreciate the diversity of opinion that we have as far as our board is concerned. And I will say, I do appreciate the fact that everybody has come out this budget cycle. It has sometimes been very tiring for me. Sometimes it's been keeping me from sleeping at night. I know Sunday night into the day, I think I didn't go to sleep till four thirty in the morning because I was trying to do the right thing. And I wanted to do the right thing, even though I knew that I needed to support the twelve cents that sat there. I do wanna say that, yes, there is strong support for public education. And again, I'm like Mr. Gabriel, if I took all my emails, they come down on the side of support. And there have been times when I thought we really probably should have advertised a little bit higher rate. I do think that I have kept in mind what it's like to be on a restricted budget. I'm retired from Montgomery County Public Schools and I'm proud of that. And I've never made any apology for that. But that's a very small amount of money. I do have retirement and the school system paid for some of that. I paid for it myself, some of it, too, because I started teaching so long ago. But when I left teaching the first time, I took that money out. And I'll tell you, it was three hundred dollars. When I bought it back so that I could use it toward my retirement, I paid six thousand dollars for that same amount. Times change, things change, and it's tough. The rest of my funding comes from social security. We got a little bit of increase last year, but guess what? Up went my Medicare payments. So I just want you all to understand that as I make decisions, I am thinking about the future. My grandchildren go to school in Roanoke County. My son's work is in Roanoke, and that's why they moved there. But they spent a long time investigating where were the good schools in Roanoke County. And he does pay a dollar and nine cents. But I want my grandchildren to have the best. And I don't think that money says it off. Never has, never will. If it did, then my poor mother, bless her heart, may she rest in peace. And she's been gone about twenty years now. She fussed at me all the time when I said, well, I don't have money. And she said to me, well, then if you just hadn't gone to teach school like you wanted to do, then you'd have money. You should know, you're never gonna get rich. And I said, but getting rich is not my goal in life. I spent forty-five minutes a day talking to a young mother from Christiansburg, trying to explain to her that a lot of what we know about schools is not really what we know about schools. We listen to the rumor mill an awful lot. And so we get some ideas about what's going on. But, you know, this budget's not just about schools, even though schools take the largest portion of it. This budget's about providing services. I can't think of a greater service than our schools or our deputies. Look, they're here tonight. Our public safety, our health systems, all the things, all the different boards that I sit on as a member of this board body. But I do want you to know that I believe that all the members of this board take all the information they can get. And then they very seriously listen. And then they make the decisions based on what they think is right. And that's the only way we can go. And can I sleep at night? Yes, I can, sometimes. But I also stay awake many nights. Because I know what it's like to have parents who are elderly and who need help. I also know what it's like to be on a fixed budget. But I also know that I have two grandchildren sitting in Roanoke County. And I would take every penny I have to help my son make certain that they have a bright future. Now, go back to what Mr. Gabriel said. This twelve cents, while it seems exorbitant, is not in the grand scheme of things. And I live in the town of Blacksburg, so I'm gonna pay almost a dollar. Or a little over a dollar, actually. So when you think about all of the things that are here, it doesn't behoove any of us to downplay what other people think or say. The only thing I can do is to do what I think is right. And what I think is right is I'm gonna vote for the twelve cents. But it breaks my heart to think that there may be sixty people out there who are not gonna have jobs. There may be other things in our schools that they're not gonna have access to. Things that my grandchildren really enjoy in Roanoke County. So I do want to say to you, thank you for coming. Thank you for talking to me. Thank you for calling me. Thank you for emailing me. And thank you for being here. It is incredibly important for our citizens to be involved. And while I know there are some of you that I don't hold the same opinion as you do, that's okay, too. So at my advanced age, I don't know, a woman never tells her age, but nevertheless, at my advanced age, I am so grateful that I live in Montgomery County. And I understand what it's like to have no money at the end of the month. To think twice about making a five dollar purchase that you didn't make before. So when you go out of here, I hope you understand where I'm coming from. And if I only had the courage, I'd tell you more, but you don't, you know, you don't need to hear it. So thank you again. Thank you for everything. And I am gonna support the twelve cents because, like Ms. Bates, I believe it's the right thing to do. I don't stand a game anything from it, except the fact that at least we're making a little bit better some of the things that we've been trying to do. bit better some of the things that we've been trying to do. Thank you very much.
My turn?
No. I said it all. You don't have to talk yet.
Everybody here has a reason for voting the way they vote. This is, in 15 years, every year has been tax night is the toughest night that we spend on the board. We heard from you folks for the last couple of months. That's nothing compared to what goes through our heart and our gut tonight. Because tonight is the finale. Everybody's got stories. I don't want to belabor things. I just want to bring up one point. Well, I'll bring up more than one, but one thing that put us into the shape we're in today, in my estimation, all right? Two and a half years ago, we had a tremendous catastrophe. We had taken tours of that catastrophe. That's probably, what, three, is it three years ago now?
No, it's just two.
Two, two years ago.
Yeah, time's flying.
And we had five board members, and I was one of them, who said, "Well, you know, we can rebuild that school." And then, our school engineer approached me and he said, "Jim, you know, it's going to cost you $16 million to repair the school, but we really need an air handling system." And I was going to put it up to 19. And I said, "Well, that's reasonable to me," you know. People started asking, "Well, what are you going to do to pay for it?" There are some questions about the $5 million we got to rebuild the gym. That was, I'll tell you, a tough negotiation to get that high. And all you're replacing is the shell, so you're not building, you know, foundation up. So, $5 million, I think, was probably pretty reasonable. Anyway, numbers got up and they went up to 25,000 or pushing it.
Million.
Million.
Twenty-five million.
Million.
I mean, million, I'm sorry. And I said, "Well, do we put 25 million and get the same thing? Or do we spend 25 or 28 million more? We already have the land and build a new facility." So, I was one of the two board members, I guess, that reversed my decision. I came up with an idea, and we hadn't gotten the cash yet, but we're getting the properties. They would sell all the properties that were vacated by the schools and take the money and put it into building a new school. Schools, excuse me. Two of which are in my area, by the way. Auburn and the remodeling of Auburn Middle, or Auburn High Four Middle. And my suggestion or proposal at that time was, and maybe we can do this like we did our two middle schools several years ago. Do it over a couple of year period, so we're not settled with one big tax increase all at one time. I had agreements from everybody. We all talked about it. At the end of the day, it was decided to do all this at one time. So, instead of having five cents and five cents, or three, four, and whatever, over three years, it all hit us at once. And that's today. Okay? You got to forgive my ranting a little bit ago because I was having trouble putting numbers together, and I'm usually pretty good at it, but Ms. Biggs, I understand now what you were saying. Just took a little bit to sink in. Yeah, I would be taking about a million and 1.4 million and putting in an operating budget, and I would do that. Because I feel like if we got to do it two cents next year, or maybe we'll get the revenue increases from industry and things, that we won't have to do it at all. Okay? So, anyway, I'm a 10 center on this, and I think the 10 cents is to cover the school debt service, which is what I help cause in many ways. And we did have some growth. We did have some contribution from the county. I don't know that we have a rollover fund from the school board yet. Have we got that?
No.
Okay. There may be, there may not be. I've never seen here and we didn't have something. So, and I want to support the schools. And I would take the money out of capital reserve to do that, if that's what it took to keep their funding. Because I have confidence in our county. I have confidence in our economic development department. I have confidence that I have a proposal here to, and I don't know how people feel about this, but to increase the possibility of getting some good hotels and restaurants in the county, so we have a new revenue source. I'm going to mention this, and everybody laughs at me and yells at me, but I've been working on a thing called industrial hemp. And if I can get that passed, I know we can create jobs for that, and in that area. All kinds of jobs, not just agriculture jobs. But they build houses with it. They make biofuel out of it. They make milk out of it. I use hemp shampoo, can't you tell? So, you know, these are things that I look at to try to save taxpayer dollars is to generate more income from growth. The housing market could come back. If it does, we'll have automatic growth. Wouldn't I have to change the tax rate? Okay? So, that's where I'm at, just so you know, and why I'm there. And I really, really appreciate, and I've had some good and some ugly emails, but I really appreciate everybody's input. And I especially appreciate the number of people that have come through this process with us. And in just a few seconds, it'll be over. But don't stop coming. So, if there's no further discussion, I would like to... What am I trying to say?
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
This is for 12 cents. Mr. Curry?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Nay.
Mr. Gabriel?
Happy to be the fourth, yes.
Chair Pulevis?
Nay.
I have four ayes, three nay. Thank you.
All right. The tax rate has been set. The next item is the budget, and the tax rate is 87 cents.
Yes, sir. And if I can, on the next item, resolution adopting the fiscal year 12, 13 budget, the amount that will be in that blank is 162 million... I'm sorry, 163 million, 287,594.
Say it again, 163.
163 million, 287,000, 594.
594.
Now, there is one, and there is one clarification on that. If you look on your sheet for the 12 cents under number six, there is an additional amount of $498,267 that we need direction on whether you want to reserve it or whether you want that additional money to go to schools. Because we did not recommend a disposition of that money, so we need your direction on that.
I would, I would, I would like to see some portion of it go to schools. I would also see, wonder if the board might entertain some portion of that being devoted to parks and beefing up perhaps their programs, or perhaps something like that.
I can't hear what he's saying.
That would be nice.
Is that something that, I guess, we have to have that exact amount tonight, like, because it's the budget budget? I mean, is that something that we need to have a firm amount, like, how much is going where? Or...
I believe the answer to that is yes.
Can I ask a question here? If we decide to put it in reserve, we can allocate it later, am I not correct?
Yes, sir. You can designate it to go to reserves, and then you can allocate it out at any time at a later date.
And that way, it'll give us time to consider what we're going to do with it.
We don't set the budget by fund, it's just in total right now.
Say that again, Angie.
This, Marty, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the total amount, and we're not saying how much is going to each fund at this point, right? So, that can be decided later?
Right. I think it's decided at the time you appropriate.
Right.
We don't decide...
That's right.
That's right. I appreciate that, because I always forget we'd have that.
So, we don't decide until we appropriate?
The school's number is a set number, but everyone, everything else will be set when it's appropriate.
So, we do need to make a decision whether it's the $400,000 tonight. Is that correct?
Can we wait till June?
Then, the school board, don't we need to provide them a budget by roughly, I know it changed because...
You have to give them their number, yes.
We have to give them their number. It changed because the budget didn't get here until late.
And that's the reason I'm asking the question, because we did, the staff did not want to make an assumption there. We just knew we had those additional dollars, but needed direction from the board on what to do with that.
So, what you need is a motion and a second to either allocate the money to the schools or...
That would be my preference. My, I mean, I do agree that all you need is the motion for the 163, 287, 594. But we've got funds that weren't recommended in my budget, that if you want to put them to the schools, we need to know that, so we can let the schools know that.
Do we need to act on this motion first for the total and then have a separate motion? Or should we...
No, I think that number should probably be in the same motion.
Okay.
Do you have an amount you're thinking for the parks and rec?
Nothing, nothing hard and fast. I was thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, but I don't know.
That would be really nice.
How much would you take in?
Something in the neighborhood of $100,000.
$100,000?
Yeah.
Something like the permanent land and industrial park, something. But that money, looking for some areas to expand in that area.
As you can tell, that was a point. I would like to see some of the money set aside. We don't have the acreage for the, we do have small tracts, and Gary pointed that out, that we do have a lot of small places. But part of what I'm trying to say is, we need to start looking for another large tract of land, and we're going to need funds to be able to do that.
Well, and some of that capital reserve, we set aside absolutely.
Can we not do that from the windfall money?
Yes, ma'am. That's one thing.
The reserve funds that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we can handle that with the reserve fund, so then that would give us back to Matt with this $100,000 for parks and rec. So, are you suggesting 398,267 for schools and 100,000 for parks? Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure.
Is that like a motion?
I would like to see more than that for parks.
How much do you want to see?
For $100,000, you can't do a whole lot with a park. We've seen that. I don't know, according to where you put it, whether you own the land there.
Well, we've talked about that before. We've got some, we've got some very pressing needs.
Does that go into the operating budget, an additional $100,000? So, next year, that's going to be another $100,000 that's in the operating budget?
Well, it would be, our thoughts would be that that would be set aside to try to address some capital needs in the operate. We would use that in the operating fund to address capital. We wouldn't add, we wouldn't use it to add staff or things like that.
So, out of the capital funds we have now, that with the 12 cents, that 1 million, can we vote later to...
You could add, you could add additional money to that. Yes, ma'am.
Or to some, or to buy land, for instance.
You could.
So that it wouldn't come out of the operating budget?
Okay. I'm getting confused over here at the side. Are we talking about the windfall money? One time, we're talking about ongoing operating. So, if we're talking about $100,000 to parks and rec for ongoing operating, that will be in your budget each year to address needs in parks and recreation. If you're talking about looking at developing some of our, or maintaining some of our parks, you certainly can use some of the facilities and maintenance reserve funds that have been earmarked from the windfall to do that as well.
I guess, what if we just reduced the amount that we were thinking about using parks? Figure out what amount we need to go towards the schools? That's the only decision that we have to make tonight. And then, we can look at what the amounts that need to go to parks and rec, or some other operational costs. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what, that's the only decision we have to make tonight, is how much money we're going to give the schools.
So, is the amount of money, 421,028, is that the...
The 421,028 is adding the additional state money for their expenditure, and then you're allocating the 498,267. So, out of the 498,267, how much of that do you want to go to schools?
Okay, that, that 498, that can be reserved, but the 421 is a part of that 498?
No, ma'am. I thought it was two separate things. Two separate things.
So, we can say 421 to the schools?
That's their state money. Yes.
And then, we can, from the 498, that can be put in reserves?
This is ongoing operating money, so you can allocate it to schools. We can put it in special contingencies, and you can decide at a later date.
Well, I'll put it in reserves and let us decide on it later.
Yeah, I think we need to have a little bit of time to...
Now, the problem with that is, you're trying to tell the schools what their number is.
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
Can I make a suggestion, then? Is that, I would suggest that we put $350,400 into the schools, which would save six positions and would leave us $148,267 to put into reserve for a discussion somewhat for later. And I'm happy to make that into a motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
And moving seconded, any discussion?
And so, that still leaves us 498,287 that we can have for reserves?
No.
No.
This is, this is dividing that money up.
Okay. That's what you're dividing. All right.
Yes.
So... Okay, let me see if I've got this. The 421,028 is an increase to schools.
Yes.
$350,000 is an increase to schools.
$350,000 and $400.
And 400, okay? And then, the balance of that, 148, I hope Angie's run the numbers over here, so we balance, will hold in special contingencies for a decision later about how to allocate that.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
The 148,267, right?
Yes, right. Yes.
148,267, is that the difference?
Is that the...
147,867.
147, what?
867.
How does she get 867? Oh, okay, she's 50.
Yes.
Okay.
$350,000 and $400. Yes. Okay.
It's 147,867, I think.
867.
Oh, yeah, okay.
147,867.
I forgot the 400. You're right, you're right.
Okay, one more time. The school's advertised budget is 91,197,752. You're adding to that 421,028. You're also adding to that 350,400. Okay. Then, we're taking 147,867, holding that in special contingencies for a decision later about how to allocate that. Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
And that's the motion, right?
Got motion and got seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
I'm gonna vote aye. I need to read this into the direct, into the minutes, and it may be part of the minutes. This is a disclosure of personal interest. Pursuant to section two point two dash three one one two A two and section two point two dash three one one five G of Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty as amended, I, Mary W. Biggs, as member of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery, Virginia, make the following disclosure. Number one, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the adoption of the county budget, which includes the school board budget and compensation for teachers in the Montgomery County school system. Number two, I am a teacher in the Montgomery County school system, I will be directly affected by the portion of the county budget that includes compensation for Montgomery County school teachers. Number three, I nevertheless am able to participate in the discussion and adoption of the county budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And this is signed, and will may be part of the minutes. And I'm voting aye.
Mr. Tuck? Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Polis?
Aye.
Five, two.
We've gotta act on it.
Oh, that's next.
Yeah.
All right, I got, all right. Next item on the agenda?
I lost mine. Yes.
Is proclamation, senior core week, and I do have a motion, please.
They'll move.
Second, third.
They're moving seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Polis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is county attorney's report. And county administrator.
Mr. Chair, just two items tonight. First off, thanks to each one of you for the hard work and the time you've put into this budget. I've been in this business twenty-three years, this was a tough one, and I certainly appreciate all the questions and efforts that everybody put into, in your deliberations. Also wanted to mention that if you have time on Saturday, the Elliston Fire Department is celebrating their fifty-fifth anniversary celebration. I believe it starts at eleven o'clock and goes through the afternoon down at the Elliston Fire Station. I know Chief Rakes and the folks down there would love to see a good turnout, so if you have an opportunity on Saturday, feel free to drop by. I know they'd love to see you.
Ten, ten to five.
Ten to five.
Celebration certainly starting at twelve.
Thank you, thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Perkins?
Well, I had a whole bunch of things I wanted to say, but I said them already, mostly. I, I had read this mem article by Dan Casey in the Roanoke Times, which had to do with how teachers have been treated in the state of Virginia, but I'm not gonna bring it up. I just simply want to say, if you haven't read it, it would be worth your while to read it. It was, it's an excellent review of what's happened, but I would like to say thank you again to my fellow board members, and thank you for, to the people out there in the audience in Montgomery County, and to all the people who work in the Montgomery County school system. I think you're the best, so.
Supervisor Creed?
No report.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Just two very brief things. I attended a school board meeting last week, and the only thing I'll say about that is that everything in construction-wise is on schedule, so hopefully everything will be open very soon. Their roof repair, this section of their roof repair project is on schedule, it's almost completed for the year as well. Also, I just wanted to say, I already contacted Chief Rakes to give my regrets, I won't be able to attend the, the Elliston Fire Department event, but that's just a wonderful community down there, and I hope it, hope it goes well. And that's all.
Supervisor Tuck?
I had the pleasure of seeing the Montgomery County school systems in action over the last four days and going to Philadelphia with the Christiansburg Band. When we were looking at merit raises and the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're looking at allocating, I wish we could figure out a way to give merit raises to teachers, and seeing the hours that they're not compensated and the good teachers who are spending a lot of extra time. If I could figure out how to work out merit raises for teachers, that would be a wonderful thing. Thanks.
Supervisor Brown?
Couple of things. First thing that I want to say is that I want to thank all the citizens that have shown up to our meetings, I guess, way back, even when the school, high school collapsed and so forth, because I think local government works at its best when the citizens are involved. Yes, we all might be on different sides of the fence about different things, but we all can respect each other's points of view. I thought it was so fitting what Ms. Myers, or McCurn, whatever, whatever that is, the things she learned in kindergarten, we all could take a little lesson at that. Also want to thank the county staff, because dealing with those numbers and you got seven people asking you questions, and it's almost likely we asked a question, we want the response from like yesterday, not today and not tomorrow, and you guys have been responding real quickly. If you, you know, if you didn't know the answer, you still give us an answer and says, you know, there's something we're having. And I want to thank my fellow board members here, because all seven of us probably had some sleepless nights, and we made a tough decision, and some decisions was tough to say no, some was tough to say yes, but we got there. Also want to thank the school board. I mean, it, it seems like they have a problem not necessarily created by themselves, it's sort of created at the state level, and so I think that they do a fairly decent job with funds that they do have. And also, my heart goes out to the positions that will, that will be lost. I think when you look at, if it's six positions in Montgomery County that's lost, that's sixty less people paying taxes, going out buying goods, and the dollars circling back in. And so there's a lot of things to give to a lot of people, and I really appreciate the people coming out. All I can say is that because the budget is passed, keep coming out, get involved in your local government so you can know what's going on. Thank you.
Ms. Biggs?
I agree with Supervisor Brown. I think that, you know, this is democracy in action, and of course, we have a form of representative democracy, and I really appreciate everyone coming out and the comments, and, and it's been an education, because a lot, a lot of people have brought up a lot of good, good ideas to look at, good ideas to think about, and, and I feel that we did the right thing tonight, and I want people to come back also. Talking about getting involved with government, there is going to be an open position on the library board of trustees for, we're looking for a person from District F, Andy Markawa, who is finishing his second term up, June thirtieth, twenty twelve. You can serve two terms and then you have to go off, and so we're looking for someone from District F, and that will be in the newspaper, also will be broadcast on the TV station. So if you know anyone in District F, you might want to encourage them to apply. The other thing I want to bring up, I, goes back to Delegate Yost, because one of the things that we've always done is had a follow-up dinner with our General Assembly members, and now that the budget has been passed, I was wondering if we were still planning on doing that sometime in the future. And the other thing I want to bring up is, we haven't had, or have we, hasn't been like a quarter since we've had our dinner with the school board? Shouldn't we be planning another dinner? And I heard specifically, there was some, there was issue raised about inclusion. You know, usually when we have dinner with the school board, we have something on the agenda to talk about, and that might be something that could be talked about. So I'll just throw that out for the people to take back during their meeting, because it's been a while since we've had a dinner with them. And that's it.
Yeah, I'll just add that I think both of those meetings are great ideas.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of things. I handed out a letter earlier today, and would you like me to read it so the audience can hear it?
Yeah, why don't you let them hear what you're thinking?
You're a better local reader than I am, neither Mr. Tucker, Ms. Biggs.
Oh, boy, I wonder if I can still read this this late. Okay, April twenty-third, twenty-twelve, honorable Senate House members, regarding a request for legislation allowing mixed beverage license at the I-81 exit one oh nine interchange. Ooh, I'm talking about drinking, I'm a teacher. You want me to read this? Okay. Dear!
I'll be after it. You have no problems with it.
Let's take turns. I'll hand it over to you after a first couple paragraphs. Dear, and that would be the Senate or House delegate. The County of Montgomery, Virginia, has identified the I-81 interchanges at exit one oh nine and exit one twenty-eight as areas in the unincorporated part of Montgomery County, where the county would like to see commercial growth in order to diversify the county's tax base. Yay. In recent years, several parcels within the interchanges have been resowned at the request of the property owners to a land use that allows commercial development. Unfortunately, the commercial development has been slow to materialize. The property owners in these areas all agree that the main reason development has not occurred today at these interchanges is that the sale of mixed beverages is not allowed in these areas of the County of Montgomery. Although interest has been expressed in possibly locating in the areas surrounding the exit one oh nine and the exit one twenty-eight interchanges, full-service hotels and chain restaurants have both advised that they will not invest at these interchanges without the right to sell mixed beverages. Currently, mixed beverages may only be sold within the towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg, and not in the unincorporated areas of Montgomery County. The I-81 exit one oh nine and exit one twenty-eight interchanges are located within the unincorporated area of Montgomery County. Get it, Chris?
Oh, yeah.
Right here, the purpose.
The purpose of this letter is to seek your support in sponsoring legislation commending section four point one dash one twenty-six of the Code of Virginia by allowing the properties that front along Tyler Road at exit, located at I-81 exit one oh nine interchange, and the properties that front along North Fourth Road located at the exit one twenty-eight interchange, be added to the specific list of properties granted the right to apply for licenses to serve mixed beverages. There, there are I-81 interchanges in Bristol and the Abington area of Virginia that have been given similar approval by the General Assembly to serve mixed beverages by being specifically added to section four point one dash one twenty-six. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery appreciate your consideration of this request. I've included a copy of section four point one, one twenty-six of the Code of Virginia for your information. If you have any questions or need anything else additionally, please do not hesitate to contact our county administrator, F. Craig Meadows. Once again, thank you for your support with this request and with previous requests for support in the past. Sincerely, Jim, or James the Polis, Chair, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors.
There you go.
Thank you, and I'm asking for permission from the board to send this, and we'll send it to our two senators and our three delegates here in Montgomery County. Well, I'll tell you why. If you can get some good hotels and some good restaurants, you're going to attract more good hotels and more good restaurants. And I don't know of too many people who drive over to Outback or to...
Texas Roadhouse.
Texas Roadhouse to go in there and get drunk. They go in there, eat, they want a good dinner. A hotel, the closest place we have any kind of facilities off of the one oh nine exit is in the city of Radford, and that's a several mile drive from the one oh nine exit. Aronto is wide open, and both those areas are already zoned for this type of development. So I feel it's something that we will hope our delegates and senators will do for us.
Isn't that how Mountain Lake got there, it's in Giles County?
Well, let me tell you, this is what brought this up, okay? About two months ago, Christian Gribald did an article in the Roanoke Times, and he said, paraphrasing, of course, Giles is a dry county. Well, if Giles is a dry county, how do they have liquor by the drink at Mountain Lake? Well, there was special legislative action taken, and it was specified, and Marty found the code for me, and it said, well, if you're thirty-eight hundred feet in altitude and you're surrounded by national park, you're gonna have liquor by the drink. Well, along with that, the next statements were, if you're off the Blue Ridge Parkway and blah, 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 the same type of legislation, and I believe there's three of those off the Parkway, and then we have the two off of eighty-one. So there's already precedents set, and these are some of the ways I feel we can gain extra revenue and many more jobs. So this is my sales pitch on that, and I appreciate the board very much in allowing me to mail this letter, and I've talked to Delegate Rush about it briefly, and I'm sure he will support it, and I'm sure they all will. So it's just a matter of getting the General Assembly as a whole body to pass it. Five, three delegates and two senators can't do it by themselves, so. But that's that. Again, I want to thank everybody for their time and patience, and we got through the worst one I've ever seen, and I hope we don't have any more coming, but if we do, we do, and we'll do what we feel is the best for our citizens, though there will be differences.
Can I, can I tag on one thing to your comments? I wanted to recognize Carol Edmonds again to...
I was just getting ready to say something about...
I was sitting here thinking, I thanked you guys, but the person that really needs a lot of thanks is Carol, because I've got to tell you, even in this budget, you know, you guys have had debate, there was a lot of debate among staff on this budget, too. This wasn't one that we all said, this is a great idea, let's float this one up. So I really appreciate the time and energy and wisdom that Carol brought to this process this year, and so I didn't say that.
You don't say that for me, do you?
I was just getting ready to say, before we go, let's, let's recognize Carol, too, for all the hard work.
Well, there, there were days a lot of people knew not to come back in our corner of the building, because they knew we were talking about budget, and that was, it's been a tough, it's been a tough year, but thank you, Carol.
If there's no other business to discuss?
Shoot, let's just stick here all night.
Move to a joint.
We are a joint.
And I thank everybody.